I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Mr. Ragsdale, I'm going to pass public comment over to you.
All right. We had no one sign up for public comment, but is there anyone present in the room who would like to? Please approach the microphone and give us your comment.
Good evening. Governor Coman, 18 Cobalts, reading Wilmington. None of the COVID-19 so-called vaccines currently have FDA approval. They are still using the guise of emergency use authorization to push treatments on Americans as young as 12. There's a distinct difference between approved vaccine and one that is released under emergency use. An EUA product can only be authorized for use if there's no other treatment available. In addition, EUAs protect the manufacturer from adverse reaction claims, and there have been hundreds of thousands in the CDC's VAERS system, including over 10,000 reported deaths. Some of you may have heard that a brand name, excuse me, some of you may have heard that a vaccine called Comoranti was approved a few months ago. Based on my phone conversation with Pfizer and public statements, this vaccine is not available in the U.S., and they have no idea when it will be or if it will ever be. The only treatment available is under emergency use, but under what's products known as BioNTech, Moderna, and Johnson &amp; Johnson. There is a plethora of scientific studies, including some completed by the National Institutes of Health. Ivermectin has a proven safety record of over 50 years, and studies prove that it significantly reduces severity and duration of COVID. The same is true for hydroxychloroquine. If you haven't heard of these studies, it's because some of the scientific community, along with Big Tech, have openly been censoring it, like YouTube. Perhaps the reason for the widespread censorship is because these drugs are cheap and readily available, and because if they allow a proven therapeutic to treat COVID, they would lose their emergency use authorization. The writing is on the wall with the FDA approving COVID treatments for children as young as five. Once the approval process is complete, I'm sure that an attempt will be made to coerce parents of young children to receive the experimental gene therapy treatment. Employees of the Wilmington school system should already be aware that the chances of a child dying under 18 from COVID is minuscule. Children do not easily transmit the virus, and they rarely contract a bad case of COVID. The survival rate for this age group is 99.997 percent. The overall infection fatality rate for COVID is close to 0.2 percent, which is about the same for a bad flu. In addition, the CDC reported that only 6 percent of the reported COVID deaths are from COVID only, no underlying conditions. The following facts are irrefutable. Children don't die from COVID unless they have underlying conditions like cancer. The survival rate is about the same as the flu. There is no approved vaccine in use. There are hundreds of thousands of serious adverse reactions. So-called vaccine efficacy drops significantly after six months. Natural immunity is far better and lasts far longer than gene therapies. Forty-six million Americans already had COVID and are immune. So why on earth are there any mandates? I urge you not to subject children to an experimental treatment that is medically unnecessary. If there is a concern about school employees contracting the virus, then mandate treatments for them, not children. I believe to do so otherwise is child abuse. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anyone else who would like to make a public comment? Committee also received three written public comments, which have been distributed to us before the meeting, which we have read.
Thank you, Mr. Ragsdale. All right, we'll move on to item four, which is approval of items by consensus. We have approval of minutes October 13th, 2021. Thank you, Mrs. Burns, seconded by Mr. Fenley. All in favor? That's unanimous. Warrants L-20, 21, 22, FS-16, 17, 18, 21, 23, 24, 25, and 26. Is there a motion? Mrs. Newhouse, seconded by Mrs. Plowman. All in favor? Hang on, I need to... Mrs. Burns, are you okay? Are you in favor?
Oh, excuse me. Yes.
That's unanimous. We have warrants, payroll ending 10/27/2021. Is there a motion? Thank you, Mr. Ragsdale, seconded by Mr. Samaha. All in favor? That is also unanimous. All right. Item five is our superintendent's report. If it's okay with the committee, I'd like to switch A and B so that we can do the MAS Academic Excellence Award first.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. It is with great pleasure that I'll ask one of our Wilmington High School students very own to come forward. Joe, do you want to come forward at this time?
Joey Dinen is here this evening in his recipient, as a recipient of the Massachusetts Association of Schools Superintendent's Academic Excellence Award. I'm pleased to announce that Joey, as he goes by with his friends, Dinen, a senior at Wilmington High School, has been selected as the recipient of the 2021-2022 Massachusetts Association of Schools Superintendent's Academic Excellence Award, or MAS. They sponsor this award on an annual basis in each Massachusetts public high school at the discretion of the superintendent of schools. The selection of this award is traditionally made in the fall, allowing the selected student to include this honor in his or her credential package as they're looking ahead to pursuits past high school. The criteria includes the following. It's intended to be given to a senior high school student who has distinguished themselves in the pursuit of excellence during their high school careers, and selection is based upon three things: the three-year cumulative average, ranking class, and personal selection by the superintendent. Highlights of Joey's experiences to this point academically, he is in the top third, sorry, top three of his class of 2022. His engagements within the community are many and broad, including in athletics. He's participated in varsity golf, past member of the basketball team, and varsity baseball, WHS, as well as the Antonelli baseball team. For enrichment activities and involvements outside of school, he's participated in the ping pong club, band, jazz band, and has served as a band section leader. And in the community, he's participated in youth group through the parish of the Transfiguration. Community service, this includes scoreboard work for the travel basketball. He's volunteered at church programs and has been an altar server, along with Festival of Trees. And for work, he's been involved in helping with money collection at St. Thomas Church. A long list of many things, and we're proud of Joey for these accomplishments, and certainly wish him very well as he prepares for what lies ahead next year. Congratulations, Joey.
Congratulations to Joey Dinen and his family. Any comments from the committee? No. Congratulations. Mrs. Burns, you always have a comment.
I know. Just congratulations, and we wish you all the best in your future endeavors. I'm so very proud of you and your endeavors as well. You're very welcome.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Joey. Thank you for representing Wilmington well, and we wish you all the best.
Very impressive to have done all that in just the first three years. Still have a senior year to add more accomplishments to.
And thank you to his family for being here tonight.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Okay. Returning to the superintendent report, a number of items to share with you this evening. I believe all of them have accompanying documents within the school committee packet. Returning to item A, DESI updates around student health and safety, a few things to share with you as a committee and the community tonight. First off, I just want to take this opportunity and remind members of our community that we continue on a daily basis to actively report either positive cases of COVID-19 or those that have been identified in our community, in our school community as close contact. There is a link on our website to that. Some have asked if we're tracking it, some have asked if we're reporting that. We are indeed reporting it out of necessity to the Department of Education on a weekly basis, and so I draw community's attention to that. I'll also take the opportunity to share what I'm sure many have already heard of, but a recent announcement by the Commissioner of Education yesterday whereby, through the authority provided to him by the Massachusetts Board of Education, and after consultation, apparently with medical experts and health officials at the state level, the Commissioner has extended the mask mandate for all indoor activity in public schools through until at least January 15th, with a commitment to further review that, as we understand it, in the early part of January. So again, that mask extension for indoor activity inside schools through until January 15th. Just of interest to note, the vaccination numbers, obviously, right now, with the current regulations by the Department of Education, are tied to that 80% vaccination rate that many I know have heard of. It is the understanding, according to the Commissioner, that 20 schools in the Commonwealth have applied for that waiver because they've reached the 80% threshold, so 20 schools. And, you know, in context, there are approximately 350 school districts, not necessarily are there 350 high schools, but anyway, in context. If you are curious, our vaccination numbers as of today, the middle school staff is reporting out at 80% fully vaccinated, middle school students are 39%, high school staff is 76%, and high school students reporting out at 72% were fully vaccinated. And the final thing, just on the note of masking, I do recognize that as we're moving into, obviously, the colder weather very quickly here, and there are more activities that will be moving indoors, not just athletic, but other pursuits, not just is it the Department of Education's expectation around masking, of course, nor is it for also the school committees, but also, I think, worthwhile and important to point out to members of our community that as of October 1st, regardless of vaccination status, it is the expectation of the town, via the town manager, that all indoor, all visitors, I'm sorry, to public buildings in the town are expected to wear a mask. It is a requirement, so I just wanted to make sure to bring attention to that as we continue to try and work through the many challenges with COVID-19. I'll just pause there in case members of the committee have any questions.
Mrs. Burns?
I just have a quick question, if you can respond for further clarification, knowing that we are entering the change of season with regards to nasal congestion. In reading the handout that, the documents that you sent to us, is it, you know, even going from outside to inside, you know, one develops the nasal congestion and the sniffles? How are we addressing it? Is it, is it, if a student shows signs of, let's say, a nasal congestion or cold, are we having them tested and quarantined, waiting for negative results? I was just, wasn't sure if it was nasal congestion and an additional symptom that would quantify that. Can you, do you mind just clarifying that, because it's, I wasn't sure how the district was approaching it?
I don't, I certainly don't want to speak on behalf of Ms. Brown or our nursing staff, and I don't know if Ms. Tally or Mr. Rozier want to add in, but, you know, it really, I think largely is on a case-by-case basis and not necessarily a singular...
Symptom?
Singular symptom alone.
Gotcha. Okay.
I think there's generally, my understanding is that will, that could prompt more exploration in terms of the context and exposure and so on. To answer your question around testing, though, that would not prompt, that would not prompt testing.
Okay.
If you're referring to the test and stay, that's an entirely separate, separate situation.
Entirely, yep. I just didn't know when, just wearing that flu season and...
I know.
Just colds in general.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Mr. Samaha?
I get, my question is if, say, you know, we were to reach the 80% threshold, we were to apply, we were to be granted, we were to say, yes, that's what we want to do, to remove masks, yet the town still has a mask mandate, do you know if that would, would that sort of supersede what we're doing, or do you have a sense of that?
You know, that's a great question, and I truly, I've not given that any thought, nor have I explored that in terms of what that would, what that would mean. I mean, I, yeah, I certainly consider that boring, get back to you on that. It's not, it's not one that I've really given any thought to, to be honest, at this point.
Okay. Thanks.
I was just going to say to MJ, that Ms. Brown provided that flow chart that parents can access to, that sort of guides them, like, if my child has this but not this, to follow this kind of flow chart. So I think families can access that on our website.
That's perfect, and thank you for reminding me. Fast and furious lately. Thank you, that's a great recommendation.
Moving on to item C, district-wide enrollment. Obviously, we are coming quickly into the throes of budget planning season, and obviously an important component of that is consideration of enrollment. And so what I've provided the committee, and for those interested in the community, as an update on, really, calling them the unofficial results, I think this is important to point out. School districts in the Commonwealth really are operating in partnership with the Department of Education around what's referred to as October 1st enrollment data. And ours, it's not unusual at this time, I don't think from a timing standpoint, but it's not certified yet. But once it is, we will share that with you. But this is an overview that's pretty close, I would suggest to you, but, you know, a few maybe adjustments of students here or there. That provides you with an overview of what our enrollment is looking like as of this time period, and we're in fiscal year '22, of course, as a point of reminder. Our enrollment, again, give or take maybe a student or two, is 2,869 students. That's in comparison to 2,889 students last fiscal year. Out of enroll, out of district enrollment, we are just slightly below 60, just changing by one student at the present time. I think members of the committee understand that that could change at any point in time, but right now, we're at that, at that level. Enrollment at the PK or pre-kindergarten through grade five or elementary level has increased by 4.9%, with the current numbers that we're working at here from last year to this year. Enrollment at the secondary level, sixth through 12th grade, has decreased by 5.8%. So I know that there's, this is really informational, certainly not shaping any specific changes or modifications to enrollment per our budget yet, but we'll, of course, talk about this more in the future. I do, though, in the memo, point out some additional information relative to the secondary level, and in particular, the middle school, that we've started to, or I've started to key in on, and again, I provide this to you for, for information purposes. And so I'll pause there as well, and happy to take any questions if, if members of the committee have any.
No, we're good.
Okay. Item D, MSBA updates. There's a brief memo that provides you with a little bit of update in terms of the activity that's starting to, somewhat, you know, slowly with where we're at, but it certainly has officially started. The Wildwood School Building Committee met for, for the first time back on October the 18th, and the, the agenda for that evening was the selection of a vice chair, and to my left, some of you are right, Paul was strong-armed into that, but he serves as a vice chair, so it, obviously, will be in good stead with his, his leadership and guidance. But we talked with the group around a communication plan and what would flow next in terms of starting to inform residents of the community around, really, what this is, and it's an important opportunity for, you know, for citizens of Wilmington to consider and be a possible partner with. And we also talked about the deliverables that have been completed thus far and those that are soon to come. The next meeting, I can share with you, we had, as you see in the memo, there was, we were exploring still which date we would nail down as to the next meeting, but we have finalized, I can share with you, November 16th, that we will next be meeting, followed by January the 11th. The November 16th meeting, not that far ahead, but really, the primary purpose for that meeting, just to give you a quick glimpse of that, is to come together, to take a look at informational materials that we've started to put together that can be used to communicate what this is all about to the members of Wilmington. It's understood that many, many are interested in this and may be following this, but probably the majority have not. And so, so that's the next phase. And I'll just take this opportunity for any member of the community to point out that if you are interested in the Wildwood project, Wildwood School Building, what we refer to as MSBA, we do have a link off of the district website that's come together nicely, and thank you to Tracy for a lot of her hard work behind the scenes and other support. It is under the "our district," a link under the "our district" page, the dropdown menu, and that will take you to the collection of documents that we've put together thus far in the process, and we'll continue to keep it updated along the way.
Mrs. Burns?
Quick question. Is the meeting on the 16th a virtual meeting?
Good question. Two things to point out. One, it is in person.
Okay.
And number two, I don't know that I pointed this out here, but certainly on the webpage, all of these meetings, by the way, are, are public meetings, so certainly anyone can attend. We will be posting agendas as part of the open meeting law. We will be taking minutes and recording those and keeping those posted, so just in case anyone is wondering about that.
Does that take place here, in this room?
It is a large group, instruction room.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And I think both are at seven, but I can't recall.
I think 6:30.
6:30. Okay, thank you. There's not in something in your packet for, I don't think for 5E, but equity audit updates. We did, you know, following your approval of pushing out an RFP for that, we did do so. We received a couple of responses. We have not yet looked through those. We're actually doing so tomorrow, so I'll be able to report back to you at next meeting about, about the equity audit. And then finally, item 5F, middle school program review updates. There is a memo in your packet on that. And as, as I, as I point out there, a couple of things on this, after much thought and after much consideration and realization of where we're at with this, I'm proposing that we pause temporarily this, the program review. As I say, as I point out in the memo, nothing has, has certainly changed or altered course in terms of my belief of this as being a very important, an important next step in terms of helping try and guide where the middle school in Wilmington may, may go, but as we find ourselves right now, unfortunately, we, we did not, we were not able to secure volunteers from staff to be part of the effort, and as I've shared with you before, that's certainly something that I think is, is most important. That's number one. But, but number two, as I, back to the earlier item around enrollment and a specific focus on, on enrollment at the secondary level, you know, it is, it is right now about trying to balance some priorities and trying to take a deeper, a deeper dive into that as we, as we just head into budget season very, very quickly here. So I'm using the word "pause" deliberately, simply to reflect my intention not to, again, to throw this out, fold it up and put it off to the side. This still remains something that I think is very important to do, and, and so I can see this as a, as a period of time to give a little bit more focus to the other before returning to this and figuring out, quite honestly, how, how to move forward with this project. So I'll pause there if members have any questions.
Mr. Samaha?
So I had a little bit of a concern. I guess it's kind of the interplay between the school, the middle school program review and then the staffing levels as well. And I, you know, part of me thinks that if we're talking about staffing levels, sort of, you know, before we're talking about doing this program review, you know, how much sense that makes? I think in an ideal world, the review would happen first, and then you could determine staffing levels based on whatever the, whatever the outcome of the, that review happens to be. So, and I, I think that it's important to put this on pause because there isn't that staff buy-in from the middle school or staff involvement, which I think is important. But I do, I am, I am worried too that if we're going to take a look at the staffing levels there, and then we do this review, and then the review comes to say that, you know, here are some other ideas, that we need more staff, and so I think it sometimes can be a little bit, it seems a little disjointed and a little bit, I guess I'll say disjointed, I think.
Yeah. Thank you. If I may, sorry, were you finished? Yeah, thank you for the question, and let me just say, I completely understand, I do, I completely understand the thinking there. Just a couple of things I would say in response. First off, number one, you know, I, I think it's just really important to underscore that all I'm suggesting is that I, our team, takes a little bit more time to dig into the numbers, to take a look at the projections, and come up with a couple of possible recommendations, ultimately, that come to you as a committee. Certainly, anything in terms of personnel is budgetary, and certainly, at the bottom, at the end of the day, that comes to you for your, for your approval. And so I just think that's an important piece to take this opportunity to point out. And, you know, the, the middle school, like the high school, is more complex than just the same sort of adjustments that we can make at the elementary level, as we do every year, right? We, we share with you what our projections look like, we align that with class-sized policies, and then ultimately, you know, put forth a recommendation for where we think we need to expand, or we could contract, right? It is different at the secondary level, absolutely. And so my intention is to dig deeper, quite frankly, than I have done in the past few years, and sort of analyze where we're at and where we see the enrollment likely taking us, and then come up with a proposal, or maybe a couple of proposals. I would also, I would say with that, that that's looking at that through purely the lens of teacher-student ratios and not about programmatic changes. And I, you know, back to the middle school program, and there's a whole host of things that, as you know, I think is important to try and get at through that middle school program analysis. It is program experiences inside the school day, outside the school day, and sort of everywhere in between. So, again, but I think this, I'm just going to bring forward some thoughts and recommendations to you, and we'll, we'll see where, you know, your collective thoughts are around that and whether any are pursued. And maybe next year, maybe the staffing levels you determine collectively as a committee should stay exactly like they are, and that's, you know, that's certainly, that would be, obviously, within your ultimate decision. Thank you.
Mrs. Burns, and then Mr. Ragsdale.
So I, I do, I think, this might just be more of a statement, but I do take the rationale, and I think that's an important aspect of which, how you're approaching it. I do, however, I have to say, I'm a little disappointed. I think things happen for the right reason, even though right now I may not understand why. At first, I mean, I understand why. I do think it is critical for staff to play a role in this programming, but it seems, and I, I just am careful not to put, to look at this through tunnel vision, because I think what drives this program will also hopefully positively impact our enrollment. And I think Mr. Samaha isn't too far off the base with regards to staffing, with, depending upon the program that we do deliver, both inside and out, and what that could mean for the projections. And I understand that right now you're looking at projections of teacher-to-student ratio, but I think program may drive interest, depending upon what we can offer, which I think is something that, it's going to be mindful in what you do. You know, I've recognized that you're doing the foundational piece right now, but I do think that this, this programming review is essential, and, but I also think it will also, and again, you need buy-in for it, it'll also enhance our culture that we have long been struggling with at the middle school. I think it has that potential as well, in some respects, especially since we are governing under social-emotional, and we're trying to enhance the school community at, specifically at the middle school level. So when you say "pause," I, I, like, again, I say things happen for the right reason, but I'm a little concerned how much longer we will pause, because this has been a discussion that has been before, I know me at meetings, maybe prior to your superintendency, but about revamping. We've looked at scheduling changes, which, that adding that homeroom piece at the beginning of the day so that students can connect with and, and connect with their homeroom teacher and have a mini curriculum or a mini lesson. I think we can't look at this singularly and not recognize the positive impacts that it, and potential that it would allow for our middle schools. And so, and, and, you know, and that will also impact to some extent them transitioning to high school, and maybe capturing some of those eighth graders to come into our, our middle school as opposed to finding, you know, using other pathways, like the tech. But I just, I just wanted just to be mindful of that. But I, I just, I just wanted just to be mindful of that, that although I recognize the necessity, because I do think that it would be fruitless to spend time and involvement when staff don't have the opportunity to participate, I think I'm right in line with that, but I, I just want to be mindful that the pause, we try, maybe revisit it in the spring, to start, you know, with whatever doubt you're able to accommodate between then and now with enrollment numbers and teacher-student ratios to revisit this. I'd rather not wait a whole nother school season when I think there's so much that we can start chipping away at, to make progress on this piece, you know what I mean? Maybe we break it down initially, but it would.
I do, and if I just may, I realize in the memo, when I use the word pause, what I didn't put is for how long, but I will say that it would not be my intention to wait until next year.
Thank you.
It truly would not be. I have not lost the firm belief, and this is an important piece of this, you know, I, I don't want to commit, or I don't want to overcommit right now to say this is for a two-month pause, but I, I, it's, and I'm sorry I didn't specify that, I am not thinking about indefinitely, I'm not thinking about next, next year, I'm thinking about this school year.
Thank you.
I just, you know, maybe it's the winter, we'll see, but I just want to point that out.
I appreciate that very much, that clarification is very helpful, thank you.
I think that, I think that Mr. Smaha makes a good point about the importance of the programmatic side of looking at, looking at staffing, because absolutely to determine what kind of both staffing levels and staffing balance we need, we need to be thinking about what kind of education we're trying to provide, everything from, you know, coursework to counselors and so forth. But I think that there is an independent element of staffing ratios that can be looked at without having to automatically intermingle them right from the start. So even if you're just looking at what is the typical staffing size for middle school of our size, and, you know, are we in line, are we out of line, like, where do we, where do we tend to fall, that I think that some of that work can be done independently, if we're not in a position to move, to move forward with some of the, you know, programmatic side, that we can do, you know, we can do at least part of that work, but certainly it all has to come together. And any, when it finally comes to the point, I mean, the point of all of this work is ultimately to have some recommendations brought forward to, to the committee about, you know, any potential changes that we're going to make to the middle school program or to middle school staffing, and certainly by the time we're getting to the point of actual recommendations and trying to do something concrete, there has to be staff input, of course, I mean, it's unthinkable to not have considerable staff input at that point, as far as where, what direction we've been going forward. And I think that, you know, we do what we can at the moment for what makes the most sense.
Mrs. Smaha.
So I agree with, with what David is saying, what Jay is saying, and I, I also respect your decision. I, I feel like I would be remiss to leave this meeting tonight and to not express, I think on behalf of, you know, myself as a committee member, but also families in town, that it's disheartening, you know, to have one middle school educator show interest in this journey, when there, it's a whole community of people that are encouraging this process and have been wanting this process to happen. We have to have educator input, and it's, you know, it's just unfortunate that we're at this place of pausing again, waiting for educators to, to be on board with this. But I will say, in the packet, you reference asking Dr. Quirk to, to sort of proceed with some steps in the interim, and I really appreciated that, and I really think that that's a potential silver lining in this situation, and I would love for you to work closely, your team to work closely with Dr. Quirk, not just to gather this data that we're looking for, from, input from like the community, and I would love to hear a little, understand a little bit more about what the full entry plan was and what that means exactly. I'm envisioning, you know, surveys to families and to students, but I would also love to see this not as a, merely a data collection, but an opportunity for Dr. Quirk to, I guess, start doing a little bit of that work of connecting with families and building relationships with, you know, caregivers, and in that process of trying to understand what the perspectives are out there, but can you speak a little bit to what this full entry plan is and what you're hoping?
I can, and thank you for the question. So I think first off, actually today, Dr. Quirk and the CIT Day worked with her staff to begin the rollout of her entry plan, of which I can most certainly provide you as a whole committee with, I've seen it, I will say that Dr. Quirk has worked on developing that with, with her, with her mentor, actually, and whom I, whom I met with, and so I have seen that plan, and I can tell you that it probably will be by the end of this week, and I still have to talk with her about it, in which members of the community can expect that outreach and information about her plan and what she's planning to do for information gathering, and that will be tapping into staff, to families, and to students. So that, the process technically today began with, with staff, and as I said, well, some families will certainly be brought into this in short order. And as Dr. Quirk knows, my expectations for her, so I just think this is important, is this data that's collected as part of a entry plan, is what we're referring to here, of course, will be made available to, you know, to the community so they can see what are ultimately on people's minds. So that process is, that would, that would, it's a complement anyway to the larger work that we're talking about here, so it is a, it is a first step. It's, it's not as expansive as I was referring to with the middle school program review, but it's certainly an important step, so thanks for raising that.
I was appreciative of your thoughtfulness around that, because it, it does feel like it's still moving forward a bit to me, while we're sort of pausing at the same time.
Sure.
So I appreciate that.
Thanks.
Can I say something? I'm just kidding, go ahead, Jay.
No, go ahead.
No, 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 go ahead, I'll wait my turn.
I've already gone, I've come once. It's okay.
Joe, and then, go ahead, no, I'll go last, go ahead. Joe.
I just want to say, one, I completely respect your decision, though, like Ms. Powell, I was disappointed to hear this, and I think it's important to move forward sooner rather than later with this program review, because I do think it'll help, I'm hopeful it'll help with our dropping enrollment numbers, I mean, and I've heard a number of times on, you know, how important it is for the high school program review to help with those enrollments, but I think it's even more important to understand what's going on at the middle school, because I feel like we're, we're losing the kids from the middle school, we're not losing the kids from the high school, and once we lose them from the middle school, it's hard to get them back into district. So I think it's, you know, I understand we need to, you know, look at the numbers now and figure all that out, but I think, you know, the sooner we can get everyone on board and this committee working and understanding what's happening, hopefully we can change the dynamics, and, and I think, you know, a lot of it stemmed from inconsistent leadership. Hopefully now we've got the consistent leadership there to help move this stuff forward and understand why we're losing so many students from the middle school, and, you know, I'd be interested in seeing, are we losing them just from eighth grade to ninth grade, or are we also losing them from fifth grade to sixth grade? It seems like we are losing a lot of kids even to start out with the middle school, so, you know, change that whole, I think, community thought process on why they don't want their kids, you know, staying in district, and I think it's, it's all certain at the middle school for some reason, and I think a program review is going to help hopefully uncover a lot of that, and hopefully we can spin it and give, you know, maybe, nothing will change, and we'll be able to put out that positive highlight to the families and get them to change their thoughts on why things are going so bad. You know, and a lot of that is just what I'm hearing from different families throughout the district, so I understand we're just putting it on a pause, and hopefully we can get this moving sooner rather than later, after the budget season ends.
Thanks, Joe. Jay, go ahead.
So I guess my question is, because one of the things that I, that I'm thinking about is, is with this program review sort of being, you know, put on pause for a short period of time, is about the, it's about the middle school staff, more than anything, and I'm just curious, like, what sort of work is being done to sort of figure out, like, what is, what is the hesitation here? Because there was a large group of them that were, or a larger, there was a, there was a group that said they wanted to be part of it, and there's a whole bunch of them that no longer want to be a part of it, so I'm curious if there's been any conversations with any of those people, and any sort of figuring out, like, you know, what is it, what can it take, what do we need to do to get you back on board, because they're an incredibly valuable part of this process. You could do a program review, but if you don't have the staff, it's not going to, the staff buy-in, it's not going to work, so I, I think that trying to figure out what the, what the issues are, and what are the ways to sort of bring them back into the process, I think that is going to be essential to this, so, I mean, I'm not necessarily looking for an answer, but I think I'm just sort of making a suggestion that, you know, that that's an avenue that needs to be, I think, pursued.
I agree with what everyone has contributed. My, as we're all talking about this, I keep thinking, are we really pausing, so we're pausing the committee, we're not really pausing the middle school review, we're still reviewing, right? We're reviewing enrollment through Jeanette's plan, she's going to be reviewing, and I imagine, I guess so my comment here would be, I hope that as she's building her entry plan, that she's thinking about the research and the best practices that she knows about the middle schools, which we, was collected, I believe, we never saw it here, I would love, actually, if that exists somewhere, I would love for that to come, I would just love to know what was done previously, and I would imagine Jeanette is going to want to build on, on some of that at least, whether or not it was sort of decided that this, but I'm not, she's not going to develop a plan absent of any of that. So I feel like we're, so we're pausing on the committee piece, but we're not really pausing on getting moving on the program review, and I think as part of that middle school review, Jay's point is great, like, what do we do, what, how do we build the culture, what do we do there to make sure that we're all, everything we're doing is in service of kids, right? Everything we're doing is to make sure we're giving back to them as much as we possibly can, and it just doesn't feel like that is, is what we're doing right now. So by pausing this, it does worry me that we're not actually putting kids first. So, I don't really have a question, but I think, I guess I'm trying to say to the community, I actually feel like we're, we're doing good stuff and we're moving forward, and there's lots of things that need to happen, we can't just put the pause button and say, okay, we'll come back to this in February, we, we need to, we need to be doing work now, even if that means talking with the faculty and trying to determine what, what's going on here, what can we do to, to better this situation? So that's my closing comment, I guess, unless anyone else wants to close after me. I don't actually like the closing comment, but I just feel like I have to let everyone else talk first. Any other comments before we move on?
I agree.
I, okay, and I would, actually would love to keep, I don't know how people feel about this, but I would love to keep middle school review on our agenda.
Yes, please.
I don't know, once, at least once a month, if not every, I don't know, we can talk about that, but I do feel like this needs to be something, like, even with the entry plan, what's happening with that, what should the community know about, are surveys going out, I feel like that might be just a helpful thing, and I think it keeps it at the forefront of our minds, too, this is the work that we've committed ourselves to as well, so. All right, yeah, David.
This is not, just jumping back a couple items in the superintendent's report, I wanted to make two per comments on the MSBA building, on the Wildwood Building Committee. One thing that the committee, that we talked a lot about was engaging the community in different ways to build awareness, as well as to seek input, and there is going to be a lot of community input, so for people who are curious and wondering about when they'll be able to weigh in, it's a long process between, you know, here and there, when we finally get there, but there are certainly going to be many, many opportunities for the community to weigh in on everything from just kind of, you know, the construction side, you know, grade span, I mean, there's a lot of decisions that have to be made, and, and that's a very important part of this process, that the MSBA is looking for community support behind the plans that we put forward, and so there's going to be a lot of outreach to the community for, for input. And secondly, that one of the requirements that we'll have to do that will be coming up next year is, we need to, there needs to be an official town vote to authorize essentially the sort of continuance of the program, so just as a little, you know, think about it coming up in the spring, that there's going to be a special town meeting, I think probably in March, but sometime in the early spring, to basically have a formal vote of authorization to continue with this process, so be on the lookout for more information about that.
Thank you for that. And as soon as we have that date, we should probably put it on our future school committee date so we can make sure everyone knows. Sorry, Jay, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I just, I just wanted to sort of, you know, 100% agreement on that, and if the website that Dr. Brand referenced earlier does a really nice job of consolidating all the information into one place, so it's not like you're looking around all over for it, it's really, it's a nice setup, it's a nice flow, and it's all right there for you, so if anybody in the community is really interested in a deep dive on the Wildwood plan, that's the place to go, it's all right there.
Thank you for that. All right. So we are, if it's okay with the committee, we're going to actually switch new business and old business, because we do have some guests with us this evening, and I think I'd also like to go right to B, is that okay, under new business?
Please, sure.
So we'll move right to item B, which is the YRBS survey results presentation. We have two, two guests with us, and I'll let Dr. Brand introduce them.
Sure, thank you so much, and thank you for your flexibility in moving things around. So we, we are happy to have Mr. McKinney here, Alec McKinney, along with Christine Murray, and there is certainly some extensive information in your packet around the most recent youth risk behavior survey, or YRBS survey results, and, and so here tonight, Mr. McKinney will provide the committee and the committee with an overview of sort of the general findings, and certainly if there are specific questions for Ms. Murray around sort of what, what is next and where we go, then we can certainly address those, too. So, Mr. McKinney, welcome.
Great, thank you all so much, and I'm happy to be here, this is obviously an incredibly important topic. You know, in my experience doing this kind of work for 10 years, youth health issues have always been at the forefront, but it is just a tremendous issue right now, and some of this data will certainly spare that out, so this works great. So I'm not sure how much you all are familiar with the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, it's a CDC national survey that is administered in all 50 states, there's a state sample that is, that is a benchmark, and then most cities and towns, not all, do their own, and in your case, you are part of the Middle Sex League, which is a consortium of 11 towns that create a regional average. So the data that you all have provides your, your district rates as well as comparisons to the Middle Sex League, which is a better comparison for you than the state. So I applaud you guys for being part of that league and being, participating in that collaborative. This, the YRBS asks questions across six, five different domains, we've also added a COVID-19 domain this year, so it's COVID-19, mental health, substance use, unintentional injuries and violence, sexual behavior, nutrition, physical activity, and there are roughly 100 questions that cover that whole breadth of topic. I'm just going to go through this very quickly, I understand we only have about 10 or 15 minutes, I'm going to not cover some of these slides, and so forgive me if I blow by them, and if you have questions on those, I'm certainly happy to circle back. I won't go through the approach, but there's a fairly robust, agreed on approach that is based on the CDC suggested approach. The distribution of your school students was pretty good, but I will say that the numbers for anyone who wasn't white are somewhat unstable because of their small numbers. Now, some of them are, you know, better than others, but in general, I really want to pay some caution on, certainly on the Native American, Alaskan group, you know, the cutoff is about 30, and I know that sounds like a small number, but anything 30 is sort of stable, but, but questionable, really, we look to have 70 people in a particular group in order to feel that's a really robust sample, so just keep that in mind as you're looking at some of these results. The first two sections are related to truly miss mental health, the impacts of the coronavirus pandemic, as well as, as just a lot of the mental health questions, and it really just shows the incredible burden that they're experiencing. On the good side, you're not necessarily any worse off in the Middle Sex League, you tend to be sort of around the same, but one-third of high school students and one-fourth of middle school students reported their mental health was good, was not good most of the time. You know, there wasn't a whole lot of social determinants of health issues around food insecurity or, or economic instability, but on the other hand, almost one in five But on the other hand, almost one in five students had experienced some form of loss of a family member or close friend during the COVID pandemic. Again, not that much different than the Middle Sex League, but Wilmington's were more likely to report mental health, poor mental health in the past 30 days. It's 30% of the high school, 29% versus 29% in the Middle Sex League, and then 24% at the, at the middle school compared to 21% of the Middle Sex League. So similar rates, but still, you know, one in three experiencing poor mental health. Lots of negative stress as a result of the COVID pandemic and higher rates of suicidal ideation. And I'll show you those rates in a bit. In fact, right now. So again, some of these, these rates on the non-white populations are potentially unstable, but you see significant amounts of depression, significant numbers of students experiencing self-harm, attempted suicide, actual attempts and plans and actual attempts. Again, somewhat similar to the Middle Sex League, but rates high in their own right. We look at support networks and whether there are coping strategies and to support people, students with mental health issues. And again, your rates are similar to the Middle Sex League and relatively well-supported, I would say. Coping strategies, people who say that they have a specific proven coping strategies, you know, seven out of 10, eight out of 10 students say that they do. One teacher, adult school, adult in school, they feel like they have, can support of, you know, relatively high rates of those. And certainly, you know, parents also, strong advocates and supporters of students. 16% of, or 12% of high school students are taking medication versus 11% of the Middle Sex League, so we have similar rates there. Substance use, your rates were generally comparable to the Middle Sex League, except with respect to alcohol, where you had lower rates of alcohol than the Middle Sex League overall, 17 versus 21. Alcohol by far the most significant issue, followed by marijuana vaping, cigarettes. So we're seeing those numbers decline over the years. And this year, you know, sort of consistent declines. We do capture information of where people get their substances as well as perceived risk and harm. I'm not gonna go through that data, but certainly that information is valuable when you start thinking about prevention and messaging around substance uses. Unintentional injury and violence, we look at cell phone use while driving, you know, talking on the cell phone while driving, whether they've been using marijuana while driving. And again, your rates are similar to the Middle Sex League, but certainly, you know, does express, you know, some risk with 18% of high school students in the Middle Sex League and 17% in here in Wilmington, using a cell phone while driving. Similar rates around talking on the phone, around 16 or 17%. Bullying has actually gone down, you know, over the past year, largely because, you know, kids just aren't necessarily, you know, in person. But certainly electronic bullying is, are high rates, with middle school students particularly being affected by electronic bullying. 21 in four people, middle school students, say that they have been electronic bullied and smaller rates at the high school. We also look at students who have been reported being forced to do sexual things. And here, the rates are somewhat, are similar to the Middle Sex League, but still high in their own right, with 7% of high school students and 4% of middle school students saying that they have been forced to do sexual things that they didn't want to do. We also look at dating violence versus or sexual activity, you know, outside of a dating relationship. And those, those rates were no higher than the Middle Sex League.
I'm sorry, I just have a question.
Yeah.
Is there, is middle school on here as well? On the unintentional injury? I'm just seeing high school, I'm missing it.
Oh, forgive me, Ms. Bryson.
So it's, so I'm just seeing high school.
I apologize.
That's okay.
In fact, I, that question wasn't asked on the middle school in Wilmington.
Thank you.
Forgive me.
That's okay.
So these, the two charts here are comparing the Middle Sex League versus Wilmington.
Yeah.
So in that regard, so forgive me, the, the rates are, are actually less in Wilmington versus the Middle Sex League, with 7% of the Middle Sex, with 4% of the Middle Sex League. Oh, I'm sorry, it's higher. Forgive me. Wilmington high school students were significantly more likely to have, be forced to do sexual things than the Middle Sex League average. So that is certainly something to look at. The, the multirace category, if you remember from the beginning, is only 29 students, I think. It's near, it's, you know, it's certainly near the borderline there. It certainly, it certainly is a finding to be looked at, whether it's a significant finding. It's not sure, just, and I'm talking statistically significant finding. But it's certainly at 22% is, is high. One thing that we've seen across the board, and again, these numbers are somewhat small, but those who identify themselves as gender queer are consistently, and almost across the board, more likely to be experiencing risk factors across the board, whether it be substance use, or depression, or mental health, or sexual activity. And so it's something that has really struck us in the survey across all districts and certainly in the Middle Sex League. Yes?
Mrs. Burns? Sorry, only because you touched upon it. I'm familiar, I first have to say, thank you for presenting the data in this capacity. It's so much easier to follow cohorts in this capacity than the previous years. And I've seen several youth risk behavior surveys. So I don't remember or recall seeing gender, gender queer. I, I'd like to call it gender diverse. I think that's, I think more respect. I, I don't know what the politically correct thing to do it, but I've never seen that group of students ever encompassed in the surveys. Is that something new that you've, that has been added to this? Is this like the first year with that student group? And I think the next one, I'll probably wait till after you complete your, the data before I, I'll think, before I ask my second question, because someone else might also have it. But can I just ask, is that a new subgroup within, within this?
Certainly in the last three to four years, I'd say. I honestly, and forgive me, Ms. Burns, I don't know whether we, I can't remember if we classified this the same way two years ago.
Okay. I don't recall, so.
I don't, I think, I think. Certainly there has been a major push to capture gender identity in a much more.
I'm glad you have.
Inclusive, inclusive way. And so this question has certainly gotten a lot of, not scrutiny, but you know, we've tried to make sure that it, it follows appropriate, you know, research-based criteria.
Very good, I'm glad, I'm glad to see included. Thank you.
So as far as reported sexual behaviors among high school students ever electronically sent or received sexual messages, I'm gonna try to get my colors right this time. This is comparing dark blue Wilmington and the Middle Sex League as light blue. And, you know, there's certainly comparable statistics, but there are, you know, Wilmington does tend to be a little higher in almost every category here. Whether those are actually significantly different rates to, I don't know, have you given them that are so close that it's possible that they in fact could be the same, just because there's, these are in fact estimates and averages? So we usually are looking for, well, it depends on the size. But given this sample, I'd say you'd be looking for at least a four to five percentile spread in order to really believe that it is a higher number. So most of these are within, you know, two, one, two, or three. And so I would say that they're very consistent, although certainly something to look at since they do consistently seem higher. But, you know, these statistics are standard, sort of CDC risk factors around sexual behaviors and risky sexual behaviors around drug use, lack of, not using protection, you know, currently sexually active. And again, slightly higher on the Wilmington side. You know, as, as students increase in grade, there's certainly a greater likelihood of sexual activity. And that certainly shares, you know, shows, you know, almost a sort of linear curve in that regard. The next few slides are on nutrition, physical activity. And I'm not gonna spend a whole lot of time on these. They, they tend to be either improved compared to prior years or be, you know, comparable to the Middle Sex League. But, but they're certainly worth looking at and really looking at how to make certain improvements around education, around healthy weight and nutrition and physical activity. Again, gender queer students reported they are trying to lose weight and have sort of, sort of what are thought to be sort of unhealthy thinking around their weight than, than other students. And so it's something certainly to look at. I know that's a lot, and probably over my time. You all have received data in numerous formats. The raw data has been provided to you. We've also provided cross tabs by certain racial, ethnic, and gender identity categories. We have the slides. And there's also been a dashboard, I believe, passed on to you that looks at some of the key variables. Forgive my, my lack of glasses and the squintiness here. I hope, if you have any questions?
Thank you very much for your report. Mrs. Burns?
So just to follow up, I think my questions are to Ms. Murray. In looking at the data, I have two questions. One is, in seeing the data collected, especially again with our agenda diverse student population who's, in all the categories, they've come out significant for risky behavior, substance abuse, et cetera. Have you thought, and I know I'm catching this right on the cusp, but I know you've seen this data previously, how are we reaching those students? Because I think all, all students need the social, emotional, mental health supports. I think there's a whole nother layer of this, besides self-identity, because we don't know how many of these kids publicly self-identify and whether or not it's closet A, which is a huge mental struggle I think they face. But those who have and have, you know what I mean, that have come out and the bullying aspect, how are we, or have you considered how we are specifically going to capture this group of, this subgroup of our student community to ensure that they have the correct and strong resources for them to access and to be supportive? It's in order for them to be able to access an education. That's my first question. And then the second question is, more general speaking is, have you compared this data to previous cohorts? You know, and how do, how do you approach this when thinking about resources, programming, the basis of what we currently have, and if it is effective or not, and why? How do you take this data and, if you don't mind speaking? You don't have to go into detail because I want to be mindful, but how do you encapsulate this information, which I think is great information? I look forward to it every other year, and to put forth stronger programming and/or new programming to support our student body?
Yeah, no, I think it's a lot of information. So we're still kind of unpacking this with all the curriculum team leaders, the leadership team. But obviously, we want to support all of our students, making feel everyone comfortable and safe at school. But really looking at this data showing the most probable probabilities is really what we want to kind of unpack and look at and really see what we are doing as a district to improve on that as a community. You know, this is a community effort on how we can all kind of pull together on some of this data. I know from the past, you know, just looking at what we have as a curriculum, obviously, for, I kind of broke it down into each sub, subtest of alcohol and other drugs. So we have the health curriculum, screening for brief, which is a substance abuse referral that we look at for students in a checklist. Tobacco, we've done a lot with like the vaping committee, and we're looking at health curriculum in our district constantly. The nutrition and physical activity, we're working close with curriculum team leaders and Mrs. Elliott, just with the curriculum overall, how to support our LGBTQ students. We're having trainings coming in with our staff and our leadership team, starting there, actually tomorrow or Friday.
Great.
So there is a lot going on in the, working with the school wellness policy, which I know that's partly a committee that you've been on as well. The unintentional injuries and violence, really looking at our bullying prevention and intervention plans. We have SAT at the high school, Mark program, really looking at our bullying programs at all level in the curriculum and kind of taking a look to make sure we're up to date with all the evidence-based programming. And then mental health, I think we have done a lot with social emotional learning since, I want to say the spring of last year or two years ago when the pandemic happened. Looking at our advisory programs, how can we really get the SEL support into the classrooms? PBIS, choose to be nice at the middle school, all these initiatives that were really coming together for SEL.
But how do you, how do you measure the effectiveness of that programming? I think is, because we do, and that we have brought in some really great and strong programs, but it's effectiveness, how do you, how do you rate that? And I'm not sure what measures you use for data collection to rate that, so to enhance that programming. I, I guess that's where, and that's why I'm asking if you go through the cohorts, where it applicable, if that's a, you know, a measure of revisiting this program? Not just that we have it, but it, you know, that's what I was, I'm just.
Yeah, I think we're constantly looking at, you know, and improving what we can. The SOS program just recently got updated, so we're looking at the effectiveness of that and really working with advocates if we do need an increase currently with everything that we're dealing with, with the pandemic. So just kind of looking at the effectiveness of that. We do look back at our previous reports as much as we can to kind of, I know it's changed the format a little bit since the last time we did it, but really looking at any trends or are there areas of improvement? But yeah, just kind of taking all the data from all the different programs that we're looking at to try to use it for grants. How can we bring in, you know, sort, certain programs? So we do use this data a lot, it is one piece of information. But we'll continue to look at the effectiveness of all the programs that we're doing.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Melissa?
Thank you both. Two things really, two, yeah, two particular areas really stood out to me. And that's obviously our LGBTQIA youth, but also our bullying rates in our town. And in comparison to the Middle Sex League, our number as a district was over double. And I just want, and I really want to emphasize something that Ms. Murray said, which was, this is a community effort. So this doesn't stop at school. Like, families have to understand that this is happening. And actually, I think parents and caregivers are better positioned to really start to take a look at this with us as a school community. Because parents have a different kind of influence on their children. And I think that it's important that families understand how much of an important role that they play in this, both in educating their children about inclusivity for their LGBTQ peer, for their children's peers at school, but also around this bullying issue. I think it behooves us all to take a look at what kind of modeling are we doing as adults and to not just place this, you know, in the, in the laps of school programming and evidence-based efforts at school. And I really, really appreciate everything that. school. And I really, really appreciate everything that our district is really doing in terms of SEL right now. But we have to help families, and I don't know if there's a, a way to sort of start to really do that outreach to families, so that it's not just being done. This hard work is happening in schools, I know that it is. But families have to understand too, the important role that they play in this as well.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And, you know, we will continue to look at opportunities too, to involve that family engagement and feedback, and providing parent nights, even our new social emotional learning specialist is interested in providing topics of interest to families on even some of the sexual behavior, how to talk to your students about sex at home. So there are different programming that we will kind of look at this and, and be able to offer families as well.
Right, because it's such a partnership.
It is. It is. Thank you. I appreciate you saying that.
Ms. Murray, what, do you know what our participation rates were at the middle school and high school?
Was that on the first page there?
Yeah.
I think I wrote it down too.
Do you know how many high school students you had?
Five twenty-four, I think.
Sixty-six percent in the high school.
Did you just do that math in your head?
I'm not worthy.
That's impressive.
Don't quote me. What's, what's the?
We all trust, we believe you, we trust you.
It seems right. I mean, it's like seven fifty or five hundred, right?
That works for me.
Is the, is the participation rate comparable to?
It's a really good question.
Other schools?
This year, because it was a COVID year, because it was remote in most cases, I assume that you were all remote at that time.
So we had, we did it in in-person days.
You did in-person days.
A lot of districts did pick the remote option, but we picked in-person for our students.
Well, it was a, and maybe it was still for you, even though you were in person, but it was a, it was a resilient year. And so our participant, participation rates did go down. Sixty-six is about, is a bit lower, quite honestly, than most. You know, typically it's about ninety-five percent. We have very good participation rates. But this year, the average was around sixty to seventy percent. So you're sort of right in there. But it.
Because I, you know, if, with, without really high rates of participation, I also worry about there being artifacts in the data, that are we looking at a truly representative sample, or is there something about the students who didn't take the survey that makes what the students who did, in, in some form, not representative of the, of the community? I mean, hard to answer questions like that, but it's.
Well, it's, it's not difficult as long as we have the data. And I would be happy, we've done this, there's a certain package, and I hate to say this, but there's a certain package that you get in the Middle Sex League. And so we only do a certain breadth of the analysis. One thing that we've done for other districts is to actually look at, at the, at the representative, representative sample by grade, by race, ethnicity, by gender identity. So if you can give us what your actual enrollment is across those cohorts, we can identify and actually tell you whether these are significant, generalizable data. Because we can compare and sort of determine whether there's been bias due to just what you're saying. So are those that are more likely to be risk behaviors the ones that are answering the, the survey, or vice versa? So who, who's not taking it? And is there, is there something that creates some bias with that? So if, if you would, can get us the numbers in your enrollment reflect those categories, we can do a very quick comparison.
I wanted to also point out that, as Murray mentioned, that there, there's SAD at the high school, and I wanted to also point out that there's also SAD at the middle school. That's Students Against Destructive Decisions of Organizations at both the high school and the middle school for that. And I really wanted to also emphasize the point that Ms. Plowman made about this being a community issue, and not really a school issue per se. Like, the, the survey is taken at school, because that's how you, that's the easiest way to administer surveys to students in your community. And obviously, not ever in our community, because there are plenty of people in Wilmington who are not in the Wilmington public schools as well. But the questions here are not about, did this happen like at school? It's basically, you know, did you do this? Are you experiencing this? And so it's certainly far beyond things that just happen in our, you know, classrooms or in our sports teams and so forth. But it's something that, yes, it's limited to our students, but it's not limited to things that they're experiencing in school. It's things that they're experiencing in their lives, in their communities, and in their families. Last question I wanted to ask, and this comes back to something that Ms. Burns talked about a little bit before. I'm glad that we're trying to capture that gender queer category, but I'm curious how that was done. Was that, was that like a term that was given to students to basically self-select into, or was that a term that was applied to perhaps a series of responses of how students may have responded to various questions? I'm curious about how that categorization was done.
This is all self-reported information based on specific, you know, reliable valid sort of question structure. So there, there is some guidance given in some cases where we think that there's likely to be some confusion around certain categories, but it's right next to the category. And so, don't have a copy of the survey with me, but the, you know, this wasn't some type of a combined question that sort of infers a gender identity. It was, are you, what, what would you classify yourself? Male, female, gender queer, don't know, or not willing to say? I think those are the five categories.
And now, is that, is that categorizing simply, is that trying to capture gender issues, or is that also folding in sexual orientation?
Sexual orientation is another question. And the, these questions are purely related to stratification of the data, with the understanding that those, those cohorts that are more likely or disproportionately marginalized and impacted, we need to look at those categories in particular. And so, they're, they're used to tailor and sort of, and ensure that you're, you know, prioritizing those communities most of this.
Okay. And I think it's also worth noting that those, that, that category is also very potentially overlapping with others, that there are some categories that are not overlapping and mutually exclusive, like when you look at some of the, some of the different racial categories. But that's obviously one that's going to show up elsewhere. So when we, when we disaggregate the data by certain categories, then that's, you know, people are going to show up in multiple, multiple times in some of it, some of the data.
I'm quite sure what you mean, but.
I'm, I'm just saying that, you know, you belong to a racial category, and then you also might be gender queer, or of course, or anything else, and say that there are some categories where it captures distinct groups that have the overlap in their other places where we're seeing, we're seeing the same people show up in, in different places.
There's a huge push right now to look, for instance, at girls who are also people of color, and the, and the, and the challenges that that cohort faces, and all sorts of sort of smaller blended categories. I think you're absolutely right. And we certainly, we certainly have the ability to look at any, any cohort we want. And so, we can certainly think about breaking out certain cohorts.
Sure.
Mr. Smol.
I have a question about some of this comparison. I know it's, it's the sort of the Middle Sex League. Is it possible to compare this to different communities in Massachusetts that might be taking a similar assessment? One of the things that I'm just thinking of is I know when we look, like, during our last meeting, we looked at some NCAS data, and we compare ourselves to the radar districts, which are other districts that share some of our very similar demographic-wise to us. And that, is it possible to compare some of this to that? Or is it, or because they might not be in the Middle Sex League, they did things in a different way, or?
Right. It's a great question, and the short answer is no. While I think you could argue Middle Sex League benchmark and, and comparison is better than the state, it's still a relatively diverse region. If you think about the eleven schools, the demographic makeup, it's probably more similar to the state, but not, not perfect. So the state sample is just that, it's a sample. They, they pick certain classrooms, and, and something like thirty percent of the districts are involved in that sample. It is not, it is nowhere near the size of a sample to create the type of comparison data that you're talking about. There are, there are other regional efforts, but, but not, not that many.
Okay.
I would just contact the school districts and see if they'd be willing to share the data. See, see if they do it for one. And then if they do it, see if they'd be willing to share their data.
I was just wondering, sort of broadly speaking, if in these responses, any of the categories went, you know, up significantly and or down significantly? That wasn't statistically irrelevant or crazy. And you might not have that information off the head, but I was just curious if you knew.
I, I, I tried to do that before with this meeting, and I didn't see anything that was, was particularly dramatic, except maybe around the bullying.
Sure.
The sex, for sexual activity, seven versus four percent, that's also probably significant. Although those are small numbers, those are small numbers. So it's really important to think about that. But seven to four, that's a, almost a fifty percent increase. But again, one or two additional people could absolutely skew that. So I'd be careful at looking at that. Or at least not rely, you know, not, not spend a ton of money on a program without doing a focus group or something. If you look at the mental health, if you look at the COVID data, it's very similar. Which isn't to say that rates aren't high in their own rate. I mean, I think it was eleven percent of students said that they had a plan to commit suicide.
Yeah, those numbers were very concerning to me. Even, not even, can I talk? Is that okay?
Technically, I mean, no.
That was very notable to me. We had thirty-one students at the middle school, thirty-one kids, not only were expressing suicidal ideation, but had made a plan. That is significant. I think as a district, we have to really pause and think about that.
And those are solid numbers. I mean, if you look at other districts in the Middle Sex League and in other, and other districts, there is a consistent, there's consistent data. It's, it's pretty solid. We see that year in, year in, year out for the past few years.
I think it was similar, if not higher, than last time. So it is an area that we continue to focus on. We work with Wilmington Substance Abuse Coalition. Samantha and I were just on the phone the other day, different ways we can bring mental health awareness to the district and to the whole community, and really looking at, you know, screening our students. SOS will be happening at the middle school, and we are bringing it to the high school, which is great. We just got the updated curriculum. So we're working on implementing that and piloting it at the high school this year.
Melissa's point, how do we share this data with families? Is this it? Is this where they're getting it, or is there sort of a workshop where we actually provide access to this, not just through a letter home, but where they can actually sit and sort of do a Q and A to understand more clearly, I think, what some of this is showing? I think it's, it's hard, I totally agree with Melissa's statement, that this needs to be a community effort. But if, if we're expecting families are tuning in here, and they're going to suddenly say, oh, I better talk to my child about it, I don't think that's really rational. So I'm wondering, sort of how are we bridging, how are we bridging that gap? Is there a plan to present this in a way that feels, I guess, like they can access it?
That's a good question. No, I know. You know, it did go home in a letter, it is on the website. Yes, exactly. It's a lot for all of us to take in here tonight, on TV, or hearing it, but it's, it's, it's more than that, right? So we were constantly, like I said, looking at it when we're writing grants. So how can we look at this data with families and really kind of, I keep saying unpack it, but really look at it and, and offer some nice psychoeducation to families, really provide some outreach? So.
I think the other, if I may, the, the other thing that we are already seeing as great promise is our, is partnering with our family engagement. Our two new positions that have been, you know, we're, we're so, although it seems like a long time, we are very, still early into this school year. I counted the other day, I think it's forty, forty days as of the end of this week. That is only to say that, you know, this, this data is fresh, and it's, and it's obviously on our receipt of it. So too, is still the thinking around how we can leverage those, those two individuals in partnership with Christine and Alice to meaningfully provide opportunities for just that engagement with families. So I agree with the comments around, there are some things that are concerning in, I, I, all of the things. I appreciate the, the comments around this partnership with homes. One of these things is, you know, I'm reminded all the time about the fact that we have these young people with us for about six hours a day. There's a whole host of hours that obviously are not in our care. But this data is concerning. And regardless of whether or not it is on par with or parallels, in this case, the Middle Sex League or not, there's, there's some data in here that is very concerning. And as there is, in general, as we get into these forty days, with other issues that may not even in and of themselves be captured in this data. So we do have to think about some, some creative ways to, to provide this information to families that's accessible, and, and not just, hear your point, not just, you know, a memo or a PowerPoint.
I think, in piggybacking off of that, I think what can, I think that it is a vital place. It's, I think what concerns me is that with teen suicide, it's not often, it's often not expected. It's often not seen in, or unanticipated. And, and it's those students, I think, I worry the most about. Families aren't aware, you know, and, or, you know, friends aren't aware, you know what I mean? And it's, it's those, it's those students that I, I think I'm concerned the most, and how many may have used this as a source of looking for help. And, and, and I think that's, and whether it be, I, I don't know if within the SOS, I presume it would, within that curriculum about friends reporting, you know, people that they're concerned with, or, you know, that piece, and being brave enough to go to an adult if they don't, you know, if they need to. And it's, it's offering that support before it becomes, it gets too late. I, I think that's where I, I just want to make sure that we have to, it's, how do you capture what you don't know, and, but know that it exists. So, but, thank you.
All right. Well, thank you both very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you. I encourage you to really look at the data. This is obviously just a, a small snapshot.
Christine, I don't think you're going anywhere.
I know, I'm just going to grab this.
I promise to be brief.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Ellen.
Good luck.
Take care.
Thank you.
It's going home to no electricity.
Feel free to stay and enjoy the lights.
But we're fixing it when I'm left, so maybe it's done.
Okay.
Good night. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is item seven C.
Just before we go, Ms. Murray, were you going to speak to the event, or did you want to take that opportunity? Is now a good time? That is taking place November fourth? Or were you going to touch upon that? I don't want to jump ahead.
Sure. I think I have the flyer here.
Unless you're going to.
Yep. So part of what we were talking about with the community, I had the opportunity to be with Dr. Nancy Rappaport for an MPY presentation recently, and reached out to her. for an MPY presentation recently and reached out to her to come out to our district and our community to really talk about supporting our youth with depression and what the schools can do. I think it fits nicely with our presentation, presentation tonight, what families, schools, and communities can do. There is a registration link, it is on our website. There was communication that went out previously and then again today. So I encourage families to attend. It is virtual. However, we will be recording it and posting it on our website as well for those that aren't able to attend. It is November fourth from six to eight thirty PM. So we're really hoping, and I, like I said, I saw her presentation and it's great, and she'll provide some various tricks and strategies and, and really just bring awareness to depression and, and what we can do beyond just the pandemic to support our students. Did I miss anything, Dr. Brand?
No.
On the flyer, okay. It does fit in nicely and it also fits in nicely with our next, I don't know if you were, Dr. Brand, are you all set?
Yeah, no.
Okay. I will just go into this. It is a mental health care coordination. So what that means is really how can we connect our families, our staff, and our students that are struggling with the impact of the pandemic to the supports that they need? So we looked at, as I brought to the committee last year, William James Interface. We're currently on the waitlist till July two thousand and twenty-three, and we just felt like we couldn't wait that long to have a helpline service help our community. So we did reach out and explore some other options, and we are happy to announce that we have, sorry, I'm hitting the wrong button here, partnered with Care Solus. It's a company based out of California. We've had an opportunity to work with them recently. Our administrators were just recently made aware of Care Solus, and we are working with our nurses and our clinical staff to be able to support this initiative. So it's really having another option to bridge the gap, to help our families, to help our students and all our caregivers, really to provide the support for our students. So currently, yep.
Forgive me for interrupting, my apologies. So it's until June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-one that has since passed?
I'm sorry, is that a typo? That's a typo.
Oh, okay, because I was going, I was going to like, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, so we have partnered with them just recently. I think it just, it came on rather quickly, about a week or two ago. We signed the agreement, we had some people trained. I'll get into it a little bit more, what the services offer. But it really helps, the goal is to break down that barrier for families to be able to access care and find, find the appropriate provider that is willing to help. So currently, Care Solus is serving over twelve million people. Like I said, it's a California-based company. When we were looking at it last March, we were the first town to, to look at, into it. Since then, there is one other partnering town who I, it's a job alike that I've reached out to. And she has had great experience. It's at the Agua M Public Schools. And so, that being said, we looked into it and we're really happy so far to be able to partner with them. I have a brief video here that, actually, are you able to do that, Tracy, from your end? No? I have it on my screen here, but you would probably just hear her voice explaining it. I don't think that you would be able to actually.
That's a link on, on the, that is a link embedded, is it not, in the slide?
Yes.
So if you, are you running this presentation? You are?
I can open it, it comes up the login page, but it doesn't carry the, the screens.
It doesn't? Right.
I can play it and it, she explains it if it, the audio would help. If not, I can just kind of briefly go over some slides. If you want me to start that, to see what it sounds like?
Sure, why don't you start that? We can see.
And I can turn this around maybe for you guys, if that would help. Probably not. I don't think you can hear, can you? No. Okay.
Sorry, why don't you just go through the slides and then we can maybe send us the link?
I can put these up on our website, too, to, to look at. And they have some videos that will help families. It's more of a tutorial, so they'll see how to use it, is what I was going to share. So really, there are three different ways Care Solus provides services to our district. So as I mentioned, there's a tool for the district clinical team and the nurses to refer students and their families to connect with the community-based mental health care resources and providers. There is a staff self portal, so it's all confidential. That staff do not have to disclose anything to the school system, and they can self, you know, look at the portal and access care for themselves, their family members, husbands, grandparents, children. And also, Care Solus provides families for our district to be able to do that. So those two different ways really provide families to reach out to a counselor, or vice versa, our counselor would reach out to the family to say, do we have your consent to, you know, contract with this company here? And within fifteen minutes, they will get a phone call, giving them a list of providers to reach out to, that they would reach out to to help support. They find a match and they will continue to show us that process through their software system. So I'll just break it down by students a little bit. So what the clinical team would do is really, it's called a warm handoff. This process supports school staff to really ensure that families connect to these services. And what the system is called is Care Loop. And there is a video here also just showing how the counselors really, and nurses can, can access the system. All they really need to do is get the verbal consent. There is, pretty much, they just have to put in their name and phone number, and they reach right out to the family. So it's, it's a pretty easy system for, for the counselors to use. The feedback so far, we've had eight warm handoffs in, in pretty much a week. And a very simple system to use, which is helping save time. For our staff, like I said, it's completely confidential. They really have that care support team to help them if they wanted to reach out. There's different ways through phone, email, text, video chat. Or they can, like I said, go on the self portal themselves and really kind of search on their own. And then for families, I will try to attach this video to the website. There is a how-to guide of, of how to kind of access their services. So again, by phone, email, text, they can really help from the coordination of appointments. They really try to break down the barrier with insurance. Even if someone doesn't have insurance, they will work with them and really call providers on their behalf. And again, if they don't want to disclose anything to a counselor, if they're dealing with gender identity, they can really do this process with the help of a care companion and not disclose this information to the school system, which is a nice feature. So in the heart there, the roadmap there is just really having the companions there for both accesses of Care Loop and Care Match. Again, Care Loop is that internal system that we have for our counselors and clinical staff. And then Care Match is really the system, that external, external-facing self-service website, and really having the ability for both Care Match and Care Loop to have care companions help them along the way. So just to mention, they serve, their database is really over two hundred and thousand providers. Again, it's a California-based company. They download our providers here. We'll be reaching out to our community partners to really let them know about Care Solus and, and that they'll be included in this system. But they really can help with individual therapy, outpatient therapy, intensive therapy, detox centers, which is going to be helpful for the community as well. It is a Wilmington-based link that they are giving us. However, I did ask the question because we were partnering with the Wilmington PD and Board of Health to really have access to the greater community to be able to use this. It is a district, you know, portal that we have. However, they're not going to turn down someone that kind of reaches out for help from our community, which was also a nice feature. So again, we have a phone number, we have our own district link. And again, anytime anyone wants to do the anonymous search, that option is there for them. A few things, it is not an emergency response service. Obviously, we have emergency hotlines for that to help, but they will kind of help with that process, too, as far as any care coordination after hospitalization. So they might not be that initial crisis responder, but they will help kind of provide care after hospitalization. So I don't know if anyone has any questions. I briefly went over it. There are definitely some videos in there that were more helpful to explain the actual system, and they show you what it looks like. We do have a database in there and it can tell us, you know, a little bit about the calls coming from Wilmington. Is it more substance abuse? Is it, you know, more staff reaching out? So there are some features in there that are really nice to see. Yep.
Mrs. Burns?
So I guess my question is, and this might be, as you were researching, I'm just hoping that you might, my question is accessibility to therapists. I, we have something similar in the practice I work, and we have a behavioral health coordinator who also, who does this very similar for our, our patients. My question that lies is, is the accessibility to therapy and the turnaround time of that. I didn't know with this program, if, if, that may have been a question, because I know everybody, I think the need and the demand, especially within the adolescent world and child, young children world, is really difficult to come by, to find, find somebody, to access somebody in a timely fashion. I didn't know if there was any either guarantees or if there was any kind of, I don't know what I'm trying to say, but.
They'll continue, yeah.
My concern is the accessibility and the, and the turnaround of, of reasonable turnaround, I should say, of, of finding supports through this. Do they offer any, do they offer any kind of, I don't want to say guarantees, because I think that's not the right term, but, you know, I.
They do, you know, I, I think they're recognizing the crisis that we're all in. And, you know, they do have, they will continue to follow up until there is some sort of a match in their system. But again, there is waitlist.
Because it's all about establishing relationships. So it's difficult to have that middle person knowing that, you know, you're going to be handed off. So it's, do you know what I mean? So it's only.
So they'll look for the right match, too. So if you, you know, a family is telling them exactly what's going on, you know, we might not disclose that much information as a school system, but families are able to do that. And hopefully, that will help with the process of matching. But there is.
I just want, I think accessibility is our biggest concern.
It is, yes, yes.
Thank you.
That's something that they did note, but that is, you know, something they will continue to, they won't give up until they continue to find a match, is, is what they were telling us. So, yeah, I know it's difficult, though. Yes. Oh, I'm calling on you.
So I'm assuming that there's a contract fee for the service?
For, for our district, there is a fee, but for families, there's not. So we've paid for a contract for a year with them.
Okay, is that, was it comparable to William James?
It was less, I believe.
I'm curious if there'll be a process of sort of evaluating effectiveness for this?
Right.
And whether this will be our, I, I'm not familiar with this, so thank you for.
Exactly. It is like a hidden gem. It's easy, it's, it's easy for the counselors, they're loving it so far. I do think it's something that we are not tied to. We're on a waitlist and we will, we'll try this avenue and see how things go and get feedback from families and.
It'll be fascinating to me to see their, their ability. They're a California-based company, right? Trying to help find services for Massachusetts-based families. It'll just be, it's interesting to me how effective they'll be. Obviously, they must be, and so far, they have been.
So they download, you know, kind of the providers that are in our district that have openings, that are using telehealth, you know, different avenues of, of therapy. So, yeah, so far, you know, and they will give us that data of how many, you know, who are the agencies that we're most frequently using. We will get that information as well, so. Yeah, it is, it's great.
Just, just if I could add, you know, William James Interface is the only known sort of entity in this, in this field that I was familiar with and we had heard about. If, if you were to ask the question, how many districts are, are, you know, going down this path and providing a service, hard to know, impossible to know, I would be willing to bet that prior to, you know, last year, year before, not a lot were. You know, I'd heard about it from another district, but many districts aren't. I think that last year, William James Interface started to become a known entity as a, as a very helpful provider, a partner, matching service, if you will. They take very few new clients, I guess, if you will, in, in a thing of capacity. We had our sights set on them last year, as I think, you know, a, a direction that was meaningful to pursue. And when we learned that it was, as you heard, they've been slammed, understandably. And they've, and you can respect that. They've made limits in terms of what they can accept. But when we found out how far out, as Christine said, that we were going to be waiting, we didn't know if we'd find anything else, and thanks to Christine's effort to do so. And so this is a one-year, it's hopefully more than a trial, and hopefully it provides a great benefit for not just our families and, of course, our students. But as you also see there, this is a service that is accessible to staff, all staff as well, too.
So I would just say thank you. I mean, I think this has the potential to be a really great tool, right? Obviously, we're, we're, we're new to it, and so we'll see how it, how it plays out. I, I did, earlier, I, I sort of just clicked through and, and went, and it brought up a, a number of providers. Now, how easy it is to get an appointment, those kinds of things remain to be seen, right? But I guess my ask would be if, as we get closer to the end of this, this trial year, we could get some kind of an update or status on how it went? Because, you know, to your point, it was sort of unexpected to be put in this position. So I'm optimistic, it looks like it could be really, a really good tool. So I'd love to hear more about it later.
Love to, yeah.
And, and just to, we, we will have, we went through the overview that Christine talked about. And just to take this opportunity for members of the community who are watching, the district has absolutely zero access to this confidential information and the, and the findings. But we do have the very high level of data and the numbers, purely the numbers and the categories. Nothing beyond that. So I just think that's important to point out. But to, to that, what does this look like? Has, how many have we been able to help? The data is pretty amazing, and as this, we'll be able to, we'll share that data, quite frankly, with you, I, I think. Right, in terms of what the.
The dashboard, they call it, yep.
Yeah.
The individual data, obviously, from the clinical team is confidential, but that would have, for them, the ability to reach out to a family and say, hey, I saw that you reached out to Care Solus, they reached back out to you, we're noticing that you have an appointment coming up. Or, you know, so it can build that ongoing back and forth with a family and a counselor to really say, oh, I saw that, they texted you, you know, how can I help you, you know, go to that appointment? Or, you know, it's just really that back and forth with families and schools that will, will help.
Mr. Smollett, Ms. Brown?
I'll just, I'll just point out, too, that with this program, too, is the inclusion of staff in there, too. I thought that was a, a huge thing, and I'm, and I, you know, this pandemic has affected everybody. It's affecting our staff who are working directly, you know, with, with our students, too. So I think that, I think having an option for them included in this is really important. So thank you for firing something that is.
Just had a curiosity question. I remember when the William James was brought to us, that Ms. Brown-Legrand had said that we would, we would be connecting in January to some. And I'm wondering if I'm misinterpreting that conversation when she brought that topic to us previously. So I was, I, so I was a little, granted, I understand the role of what's going on in, in the world and society, but we go from last January to now two thousand and twenty-three. And I understand them being somewhat, obviously, because we, we know how successful it was, it is in other communities. But I was, I'm a little, I guess, granted, it's more curiosity-based than I'm trying to figure it out.
If I remember correctly, Christine can correct me if I'm wrong, we, we, we waited to bring that overall proposal to you, and it was a matter of weeks, maybe a month, something like that.
Yeah, it was March, I think we were here.
And we lost, we lost, we didn't put any. And we lost, we, we didn't put any, we didn't put our name on the list, the district's name on the list, because we wanted to explore that with you as a committee, if I remember correctly. And when, when Christine or Alice went back, that, that shifted our, our place in line, so to speak.
They only take four communities a year, twice a year, July and January.
Yeah, so it didn't take long to.
I thought we were, I thought we were moving hand. It was just being brought.
Yeah, no, we didn't, we didn't formalize, we didn't formalize, we, there was an exploration of where we would fall, but.
Yeah.
Even in 2023, they said nothing's guaranteed, so.
It may not be a bad thing.
Yeah.
No, no, I just, I was just clear, just trying to tie, more so from my understanding, just trying to tie that, tie together is all.
And the one thing William James had was all the resources. Since we explored CARESOLIS from March to now, they added a whole resource library. So, you know, Mental Health Awareness Day, we can send out a letter and have the phone number and all the information at the bottom. Suicide prevention, we're adding it to our SOS. So any of our communications throughout the year.
And that's wonderful. I just, I'm just, I'm just trying to tie the communicate, the, the events together and just trying to keep it organized. So, but thank you so much for being so proactive in research.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mrs. Murray, we appreciate you.
We went over.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, we are going to, if it's okay with the committee and Mrs. Elliott, I think we're going to push seven A to our next meeting. Is that okay with you unless it's time-sensitive? But I don't think so. Okay. So we're going to push that to our next meeting and we're going to go back to old business and we're going to try and get through these resolutions in a reasonable amount of time. And so David Rags still is actually going to lead that or start us off.
All right. So just to recap, at our last meeting, we approved resolutions two, three, four, and eight. And we held one, five, six, seven, and nine for this meeting, although we did begin to discuss resolution one. But I want to jump to some of the other ones and see if we can't kind of get a little, build a little momentum and get some, get through some of those before jumping back to number one. So let's start with resolution five, which was zero tolerance policies. And, and I don't remember who wanted to hold this for the session, but please, Ms. Burns, please start us off.
Sure. So the zero tolerance, tolerance policy, although I can understand the need for it, I think, I'm sorry, forgive me, I'm going to go, I have it written down. I, I think that best practices with our administration does speak to, I mean, zero policies and, and the ability to try to keep kids in, but I think that, and granted, I know this resolution excludes, you know, physical behavior, physical. It excludes, I think, oh, does not include the violent criminal or drug-related incidents. I think it speaks to best practices that, I mean, I think that we do need to have a zero tolerance within our district, within our policy. But I think our administrators truly are the ones who, to navigate the best practices to not exclude students from school or the curriculum. And I think, I do already see that we're using these therapeutic measures to try to keep them in, but there has to be consequences to certain actions. And whereas zero tolerance policies are in effect, I think, I find there to be a need if, if not for a stance against bullying or other aspects. I, I just, I, I just, I don't know. I, I, I understand and I embrace the intent behind it, but I just, I think best practices in administration, you know, that should always be a goal to keep students in school, in classroom, they're learning. I just, I don't know if I particularly care for the language of how this resolution is presented or, or the thought behind, you know what I mean? I'm trying to explain myself.
Ms. Plama.
I read it a little differently, MJ. So when I read the, as of, so to use more restorative justice or therapeutic and educational approaches whenever possible over the use of zero tolerance policies in order to provide students the best chance. They're not excluding the importance of discipline policies, but more specific to zero tolerance policies.
Right. So bullying, if I'm correct, is a zero tolerance policy. It's still, it's still in effect and that is something that is not included in this aspect. But I, I, you know, I think you're, you're going to push through, any good administrator is going to push through therapeutic resources to outreach, to, to mitigate the situation, whether it be with, within students, with parents having to bring students in. I think there's a mitigation to that zero policy that I've seen. Granted, you know, I, I haven't seen it executed as well either, but the student's still in the classroom. I think there's always a reason for something, some, there's always, I think, a reason for certain behavioral that zero policy, tolerance policies are tied into, that I think you still just be, I think you still have to approach. I think the school still has to approach it. So I do think that we, that zero tolerance, removing some of that zero tolerance policy from our policies is not going to necessarily impact. I don't know what it looks like in other schools, like larger schools and whatnot. You know, I'm not, I'm not for, you know, I think we do need zero policy towards bullying or, I'm not, at the top of my head, I don't know what else, what other zero tolerance policies that's not already included in this language, you know, covers, but, you know, I think it's best practices and, you know, and that disciplinary role is always to the discretion of the administrator. You know, granted, they have, we have policy, but it's always at the, you know, discrimination of the, the principle itself.
I think, as I read it, it says, it says it's resolved to encourage the use of restorative therapeutic and educational approaches whenever possible over zero tolerance. So when you're dealing with things like bullying, there's a legal aspect to that as well. So I don't think it's necessarily saying there's absolutely, you know, no zero, you know, zero tolerance policy for zero tolerance policies. But I think that it's, it's priorit, it's encouraging and prioritizing these other approaches over zero, zero tolerance policies. Because the zero tolerance policies lead to higher dropout rates. We know that there, you know, students with disabilities, students of color are disproportionately impacted by them. You know, I know that, you know, the federal, like DOE, DOJ, that, you know, they have, if, if schools are finding that there are suspensions that where it's not done in an equitable way, that, you know, they're going to start looking into civil rights investigations. And so I think that this resolution is just sort of is acknowledging that and supporting and encouraging, you know what? There's, there are, you know, this, this process of zero tolerance policies, which sort of came into being in the nineties, hasn't given us the results that we want and we see sort of these disparate results. And so they, we found through research, there's lots of other ways that we can deal with, you know, discipline issues, including, you know, restorative justice, therapeutic, educational approaches. And so I just see this as sort of a, a statement of saying, yes, we noticed this trend. We agree with it. We're going to encourage this, encourage these things over zero tolerance policies. But I don't read it as like, let's have no zero tolerance policies. But there's other options out there.
So. And I, it's only because it's at the forefront of my mind. So take in bullying. We saw with that, the Uris behavior about the electronic bullying. So I think, if I'm correct, again, bullying, there is a no, a no, a zero tolerance for it, correct?
I, I know, I know that there's, there's, I mean, you get into like the legal definition of, of bullying and I know that there's things that the, the schools have to do. And I don't know exactly what the policy is. I don't know if I would consider the bullying policy a zero tolerance policy, but I don't even know if, if that is necessarily even what we're talking about.
Well, I think, I guess, and, and I think if, I think, I guess, if I would, if I had a, a better idea as to what we currently have within our district to compare it to, would be more helpful, I think, to this discussion. I, I think some disciplinary measures. I mean, you want to, you want to make sure that it doesn't lead to the, you know, the other zero tolerance aspects. But when you talk about zero, zero tolerance, you need, I think you need to be specific into what are we, what are we actually saying? Because you're already in this language excluding violence and, I'm sorry, what's it say? Violence, I just read it. Criminal or drug-related incidents, which we know that with, especially with the drugs, we have a zero tolerance. So what are we going to consider zero tolerance? Because I think criminal and drug-related are those who may need even more so therapeutic approach to it. And as we know, we, we have recovery high schools throughout the Commonwealth, a handful of them throughout the Commonwealth to support students in getting an education as they recover from drug. So, you know, I think part of, part of my argument is what exactly are we talking about zero policy? What are we excluding from, from this resolution in itself? You know what I mean? If we, if they said, well, you know, to, to, go ahead, Jen.
Well, thank you. I'm actually going to bring us back in. So I just can't go back and forth talking to one another. So I think the part that I keep coming to is whenever possible, over the use of zero tolerance policies in order to provide students the best chance to remain in the public school systems of the Commonwealth. And I think that whenever possible is really important. So for me, I'm in support of this because I feel like it's not saying no matter what, we're excluding the, we're excluding zero tolerance policy. You know, we're not saying that. We're saying that in those circumstances where it is absolutely the mandate, then we're going to do that. But in all of these other cases, is there a way that we can actually try and rehabilitate and support students and keep them, keep them learning and in school? So that's how I'm reading it. Does anyone else want to?
I can jump, jump in on that because that is also how I read it. And I also want to point out the language of encourage the use of restorative justice. I don't think this is intended to basically say like, you know, you can't suspend students who, you know, need to be out of school for safety reasons because of serious offenses. But again, you know, a resolution to, you know, encourage the use when possible of other approaches and not simply rely on zero tolerance.
But isn't that just good practice in general though?
Mrs. Burns? Isn't that good practice in general?
Yeah.
I mean, that may be, but not, that doesn't mean everyone's doing it.
I think, I think the answer to that question is yes, that's best practice. And I think that what this resolution is doing is encouraging that practice that you're talking about. So it's not even necessarily, I think, about, you know, like Wilmington necessarily, like in general, but it's, it's just, you know, I, I think it's exactly what, what David and what Jennifer are saying is it's, it's encouraging that and it's.
So it's just adding a tagline in the legislative bill that is, that currently stands to, to, and, just to put in the book, the language under the, therefore be it resolved.
Yeah.
Okay. That's fine. That's fine.
All right. So is there a motion to approve resolution five?
I'll make a motion. Yeah.
All right. And is there a second? So Mr. Fenely. So we have a motion of the second. Is there any further discussion? All right, all in favor? Yeah, that looks unanimous. All right, moving to resolution six, which is alternative to MCAS. All right, you would like to begin.
I don't know. You, are you?
I'm not going to participate in discussion or, or voting on, on, on this, but I was not the one who held it for discussion. So I don't know.
Mrs. Burns.
I don't know if I held it for discussion or not, but I'll, I definitely will speak to it. I still think that an alternative measure should be investigated in research because I am still a firm believer that the current state testing in place does not truly capture our diverse student body and the knowledge and the things that they know from the curriculum. And I think giving an alternative approach to this to capture that, I think is necessary if the data that the state is looking for is truly to be acknowledged and recognized that educators and districts are educating our students to, to the level the state would like to see for graduation requirements.
Ms. Burns.
Thank you. This is fun being on the other side. I'm, I'm enjoying this way too much, Mr. Raxton. And I just want to bring attention to the fact that says, establish a commission. So it's not saying to, we're going to go try, get an alternative to MCAS, but saying establish a commission to research and analyze alternative means for students to demonstrate academic achievement, which can be used to satisfy graduation requirements for individual students and accountability standards. So I just wanted to make the point that this isn't about making a decision as far as what our beliefs are about MCAS. But this is actually about just saying, we believe that, we support this idea that there should be a commission to research this, to see what alternatives do exist. So I just wanted to make that point. I am in support of this resolution.
Ms. Plama, do you have something to add?
Make a motion.
All right. So we have a motion to approve resolution six. Is there a second? So this, you have. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor? And all closed. And that is one abstention, which is me. All right, resolution seven, school committees and receivership. So would anyone like to begin here?
Who brought it forward?
I think I might be the one who.
I knew there was one.
Who requested to.
You start us off then.
Who requested to hold this. So I don't think this resolution makes a lot of sense. So one of the, so the receivership law, 2010 law, which allowed for state receiver, receivership, which has been exercised in three districts and a handful of schools around the state, places the powers of the superintendent and the school committee into the state receiver. And so this resolution is essentially saying that the powers of the school committee remain with the school committee. And to me, I just don't see how that is receivership. To me, the two things can't go together. That if you're, if, if a district is being taken into state receivership, then the receiver needs the authority of the school committee to, you know, hire a superintendent, to make the financial decisions, to set the policies of the district. And that having a receiver under the authority of a school committee just seems to be a contradiction. That there's no point in trying to exercise state receivership in a struggling district if then the receiver that you appoint is going to be under the authority of the, of the school committee. And so it seems to me that I could entertain an argument about whether receivership is a good idea or a bad idea, how it's played out in the state. But I think that trying to change the law in this way makes no sense and essentially is not a wise, not a wise thing to do. This is not, if there need to be alterations to the receivership law, I don't think this is how it should be done. Ms. Burns.
So I've had very, and this is probably a question too, because I think you're very much more familiar with it than I. And I've only had one experience with one district that was in receivership when I visited it. And so I understand the rationale, I understand the law as you explained it, but the thing is, is there's, there's other aspects to school committee members that that school committee, committee members should still retain some sort of authority on, such as policy creation in conjunction with whomever is placed in the receivership. I think they also, in some extent, have authority over budget. Whether the operations and direction of the receivership in the superintendency role is being removed through the law, I, I could possibly see that rationale. I don't know what's in place. I mean, I, I just think, I know with the, the previous district, the school committee's authority was completely removed, which, and, and it's again, I just don't know. um, I just don't know if, if it's necessary to that extent, per se. Um, I understand what, um, the state is trying to do with regards to these districts in improving, improving, um, student performance. But I think they're, from what I understand, and, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that school committee authority is completely removed under a receivership district as opposed to retaining some authority?
That, that's correct. That the receiver assumes the authority of the school committee as well as the superintendent.
So, and. If, if, can, if you can't, if you're able to, can you provide me some examples as to where, let's say, policy setting, um, would have to be removed from a, the school committee's authority? Granted, the receivership would be the, you know, it, it would look different than what I'm familiar with here. But I don't understand where policy or, or budget to that factor, has to be removed from the elected body. And, and that's where I, I don't, I think I'm, I'm kinda struggling to, I understand the role, but I don't understand why it's a complete, you know, the, being a little elected board member, you know what I mean, is different than operating the school district directly, I guess, is what I'm trying to.
I mean, just, I'll give a quick example. That, so for example, budget, that, I mean, that is a huge, budget is not just obviously fooling you numbers around. That's a huge aspect of policy. Like where you put your money is what, you know, what policies you're trying to, you know, implement. Whether you put it into, you know, programming, extracurriculars, whether you're supporting hiring more staff. And so to, you know, to take a, a district into receivership and then say that, ah, but the school committee can override the budgetary recommendations of the receiver because the school committee retains their budgetary authority, can completely thwart the actual attempt of the receiver to implement the turnaround plan. So as, as one example.
What about policy, um, creation and/or edit, uh, policy creation?
I'd have to think more about, I, I'd have.
No worries. I didn't mean to put you on the spot. I, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to understand this.
I'm sure you could probably also find some policy areas in which, uh, even though policies are kind of at a broad high level where, um, I, I, I mean, I, I don't know that receivers are so much changing that high-level work of policy. I don't, I don't think they're deep in the policy manuals, um, making changes left and right, but. And anyway, in my view, in my view, it's simply incompatible with state receivership to have this district, you retain its full authority. Mr. Spahn?
I was gonna say that I think that, I think that's actually intentional. I think that that's the intent of this resolution is to disrupt the receivership process. And for me, not being a fan of receivership, um, I, I would support this for that very reason, that it disrupts it because of, um, I don't necessarily think that that's an effective approach to, uh, to, to changing schools, to changing districts. And I think if you look at which districts are put into receivership, I think it's really, really, um, problematic when you look at its, you know, its communities of color, its economically disadvantaged, um, communities.
And its rural.
What's that?
And rural, some of the regional.
So, so I, 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 I have a, I have a very hard time buying receivership. And I also think that, um, this resolution would disrupt that. And I think that that's a good thing. So that's why I support it.
Ms. Fenelly?
So I was sort of of the opposite mind, I guess, where I don't particularly love the receivership law either. But I think the law itself needs to be addressed and changed through the legal process rather than through a resolution, through the Association of School Committees to take school committee power away from the receivers. I don't, I mean, I, I really, I could, I think I could be swayed either way, but I'm, on the surface, I'm opposed to this resolution.
Uh, all right. So is there a motion to approve Resolution Seven? Motion. Is there a second? And seconded. Any further discussion? All right. All in favor? And all opposed? All right. The motion fails four to three. Did you record who voted?
You don't have to, you don't have to do that. You're, she's good.
I know. It's on the roll.
Resolution Nine.
Uh, all right. Resolution Nine, prohibiting the use of Native American mascots.
I'm not sure who.
I don't remember who.
And I think.
I'll start if it's okay. I, personally, I think the intent of this is good, but it's a local issue. It's not a state issue or a school committee association issue. And, uh, I, I just, I, I don't know. This one, it feels like, almost like an overreach. So I, I get it. I, I, I'm inclined to agree with the intent of it. But I don't, I don't, I don't, uh, support this, uh, this resolution. I think it's a local issue.
I think there's a, a couple of approaches to this. And in looking at all of the resolutions that we were going over this evening, besides either voting for or against, we can also take no position. And it's difficult to make a decision when it, it really, it doesn't really, it doesn't apply to us. I, and, you know, you know, so it's looking for our, our colleagues or, you know, our, our other districts. And, um, I mean, this was brought before the Board of Directors, so it wasn't coming from a specific, um, school committee, you know, per se. But we talked about, you know, equity. We know, um, just watching the news nationally about American, um, the Native Americans and their roles. And, um, you mean, um, I mean, my opinion is, 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 is different. I'm like, you know, because I see a strength in that, you know what I mean? But I, but I also don't walk that path. So I don't know that the, the con to that. I just, I personally, I, um, I personally don't have a position on this. If it's, you know, if it's supporting, you know, I wanna be mindful of those it impacts. I, I would vote yes on it, but I would also vote that to take no position on it as well.
Ms. Burns?
Uh, I actually feel very strongly about supporting this. Whether or not it's gonna make a difference, I'm not sure, Jesse. Right. But I think to say, I don't really know. I don't, it doesn't really affect me, I think, is dangerous. Like I think there's, this is a real clear issue of, of racism and equity. And I think for me to take a stand to say, yes, I absolutely support prohibiting the use of Native American mascots. Whether or not it affects Wilmington or not, it certainly affects our state and our country. So that's where I stand on this.
Um, I, I agree, uh, with, uh, with Dr. Bryson there too. Um, I think that we, um, I think if we wanna put ourselves out there as a position or, or for me as a, you know, that public schools need to be welcoming to all students when that school has a racist mascot, I think that is sending the exact opposite message of, you know, welcoming schools. So I think, you know, these are, these are public schools. I think that, you know, we, you can't, you can't say that you're an, an equitable, welcoming school community with a racist mascot.
Can I go again?
Yes.
Well, and I, I think that, again, whether or not this affects your particular district, I think that it is important for the public schools and for schools to stand behind this and to say, for, for all, I do support this, um, because we are, it's, we're setting that and we're modeling that. And I think that what we say and what we do and what we stand behind matters. It matters to people watching. It matters to our kids. Um, and I think to, to say, well, I'm not really sure it affects us, I think, can be dangerous because of the message we're sending. I much prefer this, by the way. I'm getting very used to sitting off to the side.
Could I just be, just to be clear, I'm not saying, what I'm saying is not affect us as much as I'm saying it's not impacted as it pertains to, we're the Wildcats. Do you know what I mean? And that's just for clarity purposes. I, I don't want it, I don't know. It is basically what I'm saying. And not to, not to be, not in line with what you and Mr. Spahn are saying. I mean, I, it, it, it is all about, it's, you know, um, equity and inclusivity. I didn't mean it, and, and I just wanna be clarifying my comments is that, um, I guess my broader perspective isn't as detailed as I think I'd, I'd like to see. And I'm sure I'm gonna hear discussion on the floor. I didn't mean any, or by it, or I didn't mean any exclusiveness by my statement.
I didn't take it that way.
Uh, I have a propensity in general against state bans on those things. For, and in, in this regard is kind of a, you know, going a little bit to Jesse's point about being a local issue. I don't consider Native American mascots or team names to be per se racist and offensive. Some can be, obviously, but I don't think that that is an automatic thing. And I also would find it rather a little bit odd that in a state that is named after a Native American tribe and in fact has the state seal of Massachusetts depicts an Algonquin Indian, that we would automatically say that no school district in Massachusetts is permitted to do this. And so I would, uh, plan to vote against the motion in the resolution. Ms. Plowman?
You, you basically read my mind, David. I, I, I think that there are certainly mascots and logos that are racist. But I, I don't know that all of them across the state represent that. And I also have concerns about state mandates.
Ms. Burns?
So I, I believe there, if I'm correct, and forgive me if I'm a little off-base with my accuracy. I believe there's a measure before the State House with regards to this particular topic and the regulation of Native, Native American logos and names, being, um, only allowed for those schools who, um, are, are of a particular reservation or tribe whose children attend, or if you get special permission from, um, I don't know.
Tribal nation?
Yeah, well, well, the tribal leader. Oh, never mind. There you go. I knew I saw it somewhere. They, well, I, I know that there's a stipulation with regards to it. But, you know, I, there's a caveat that's in the regulations with regards to getting special permission. That's a, that's a part of this resolution as an informative piece. So it's, it's, it's not never, but I, I don't, I just wanted to bring that to the attention. Talking right, I'm sorry.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution Nine?
I'll make a motion.
All right. So.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
Sorry. I, I'm sorry. Um, I would just, I, I do, can I?
Yes.
So I would just bring us to the American Psychological Association. So in 2005, the APA called for the immediate retirement of all American Indian mascot symbols, images, personalities by schools, colleges, universities, athletic teams, organizations. APA's position is based on a growing body of social science literature that shows the harmful effects of racial stereotyping and inaccurate racial portrayals, including the particularly harmful effects of American Indian sports mascots on the social identity development and self-esteem of American Indian young people. Research has shown that continued use of American Indian mascot symbols, images, and personalities has a negative effect on not only American Indian students, but all students. And then it goes to further explain that even some things that we would consider to be non-rac, non-racist, or like, oh, is that really a problem, could actually be quite negative. And that they are not necessarily approved by the Native American people and that, who, who occupied that land. So that's all I'll say. I'll be done now.
All right. Any other, any other discussion? All right. All in favor? Opposed? And any abstentions?
Take no position is all.
All right. So the resolution fails.
So it's against, so no?
Yeah. So that's, so the, the motion fails. So we're not, not approving Resolution Nine. All right. So that brings us back to Resolution One. And, uh, when we left Resolution One, I believe, Ms. Burns, that you were going to, um, try to come back to us with some additional information?
Yes. Uh, thank you. So, um, I was trying to connect with, uh, the past week with, um, Beverly Hugo, who is a longstanding, uh, committee member with Framingham on, to get better for clarification. She was supposed to reach out. We never did connect. Uh, so I instead reached out to Glenn Kuchar, Director of MASC, um, this afternoon just to see if he, um, could, uh, answer some questions. So a couple of things that he did bring forth is that, um, Framingham School Committee, who is the sponsor of this resolution. Ms. Hugo just happens to have a husband who is the Director of Board of Health in Framingham. And they really have a big health and wellness push, um, into their schools, which is commendable because, uh, you know, uh, health and wellness, um, is such a big part of learning. But there's, there is some questions that have arrived, rose, have arisen, um, from this resolution that he, uh, did bring to my attention besides the one, um, I brought into the discussion. Some of the comments, um, Ms. Plowman did bring forth, such as boundaries, school responsibilities. Where, where does that begin? Where does that end? Especially with regards to where public schools and education is in our, right now, at, you know, still in the pandemic and what kind of roles we're playing, um, and probably touched upon that community piece as well. Um, I think he said that one of the biggest aspects to this resolution that it doesn't speak to is where is this proposed money gonna come from? Where is it gonna be drawn from, which it doesn't speak to? He also mentioned some other questions and concerns with regards to, um, that the premises of this is trying to align healthcare resources to schools, whether it's to create clinics within the schools or finding more direct resources for students locally that they can access. You know, there's some other concerns that have been, uh, that have been raised from this resolution is that concern about, um, student privacy and receiving services within their school day, um, within their school day. Um, if, if these clinics were, were within, you know, those districts who are thinking about doing it within the school, uh, buildings. Is it a doubling of services, uh, schools with other providers, um, who also may be monitoring students, which could be a conflict of continuity of care or errors, liability and accessibility, um, of students to be able to, um, uh, see, um, uh, clinical specialists, um, within their school day? And what that impact could look like to learning for those students and what resources there might be in addition to support them if, let's say, they did have to access, um, therapeutic services within the school day. Um, there's some of those questions that this resolution really doesn't answer. And, um, I think personally, I think more detail, uh, or language to that to, to kinda give us a broad, a more, uh, concrete look at, at what they're proposing with this money and what it would look like. Granted, it's not supposed to be detail-oriented, but it's, I just think it's a little too wide-opening with a lot of unanswered questions in, in the, um, present form. That I, I, I'm absolutely in agreement with the intent behind it. I just don't, there's a lot of questions that I'd like to see answered, um, in order to support this fully, per se. I mean, I, I support the theory and I support the need for more mental health resources and, um, especially in, in districts that, you know, have a larger student base that would really certainly draw from it. I think our district would certainly benefit for something like that. I think starting with this, um, this care resource, um, care one resource that, uh, Ms. Murray spoke about this evening is a, is an example of that. But I just, um, I think there's a, a lot of unanswered questions that are not captured within this language, per se. And I don't know, um, and I know Ms. Plowman's gonna speak. language, per se. And I don't know, and I know Ms. Plowman's going to speak to her research on this resolution as well, which, I don't, we could even consider it an amendment or may sway the decision in itself. But that's where, that's where I love it.
Ms. Palmer?
Okay. So I'm still super new to this. So I, I'm not exactly sure, like, how that works, like an amendment and things like that. But I have done a bit of research on this kind of a model, and spoke to some, an administrator of a district who has a health and mental health-based clinic, who actually had, you know, like glowing things to say about this as a resource for a school district and the students. I, I guess I'm going to look to my fellow committee members to really help me understand exactly what is this resolution proposing. So when it, when it's, what is your interpretation when it says that MASC supports proposals that would establish dedicated funding for school-based physical health and mental health clinics and services? What's your interpretation of what exactly are they saying? I don't fully understand what I'm voting on, frankly, with that language.
I mean, it, it's deliberately vague, because I think especially, I mean, there are some issues can be encapsulated a little bit more cleanly and stated with more specificity. And I think that this one is a little harder to do. So that, but that is one of the, I mean, that can be a reason to support or not support a resolution. I mean, this, again, is a resolution for, you know, MASC essentially on behalf of its members to advocate for this. And the very nature of its slight nebulousness means that it could mean different things if it ever turned into actual proposals or legislation. And that's something that has to be borne in mind. Yes?
So essentially, Wilmington Public Schools, if, if we were to vote in support of this, then Wilmington Public Schools could propose to this board the concept of a clinic, and we would then consider that?
Well, no. I mean, we could, we could amend, if we had something that we thought was more specific that would make this a better resolution, that we were more in favor of supporting, we could vote to, we could move to amend the resolution, and then we could take that to the delegate assembly and see if we can persuade other school committee delegations to accept that amendment. But we would have to be very specific on what we wanted.
Okay.
Ms. Burns?
I think, as the more I think about that and digest actually the conversation from this evening, I, I, I do love the intent behind this. But I do think, as was stated earlier, that it's not just a school-based situation. I worry about, even if there was money that was found and earmarked, that it would, how would it get, it, this really is a community-based piece that, you know, that would, would support, you know, not only our students, but we need something to support our staff and families. And the aspect is, it, it really should be, it takes a community, it takes a village to, you know, to support one another. And I, you know, my, my thing is, is I think there's every district that can benefit from this, but not knowing, is this going to be a part of, is this going to be in a form of a grant coming through the school district, or would this be money given from the legislature going to the town in which to create a more community-based resource for our students to be able to, a specialized service for students to be able to access? What, I mean, I don't, I would like to be able to utilize it within our community. I don't think it's just school-based bound, because I think, as we talked about, parents supporting students and/or staff supporting, you know, I think it's, that looks different. How do we bill that? I don't know. We can certainly, if it's a public building, house something like that for after-school. And even that might be an added resource for students to seek out. You know, that could be a good thing. But not knowing the funding source, or how that could be distributed, it's, you know what I mean? I don't know. Is this something that we would benefit from as it evolves? Or would we not benefit because we cert, we don't have certain structures in place to utilize however this money is going to be given out in whatever the, the structure, like, say, money towards clinics and, you know, clinics based in schools? If we don't have the space, or we don't have, you know, if we're not allowed to do that here, then we miss out, and we miss that resource. And it shouldn't be the case. So I, I think that's where I'm like, it's like a risk. And I don't know, I, I don't know, you know what I mean? If, if it's such a hard block.
Mr. Samaha?
I read this in a much more general sense, and not very specific. I read it in the, in the sense where it's supporting these proposals that would establish dedicated funding. So I, to me, when I read that, I think of it as like a, a generalized statement that we support, you know, dedicated funding for these services in, you know, school, for school-based, you know, physical health and mental health clinics and services. And I think it's, it's, it's just general that this is, that MASC is in support of this as a, as a, as a concept, and would encourage proposals for the establishment of this funding. But it's not necessarily, like, it's purposely saying supports proposals that would establish dedicated funding, rather than saying supports the establishment of dedicated funding. So I think it's a much more generalized statement. That's how I read it and perceive it. So if it's, in that sense, I, I, I support it because I think it's, I think it's the essence of it, and I think it's the idea in general, not, and it doesn't, purposely doesn't get into specifics.
Well, but it.
Ms. Palmer?
Thank you, Mr. Samaha, because, so that, that, this is the dialogue that I really needed, to sort of take a stance on this, because I, last week or last meeting, was sort of like, wait, whoa, and then did some research and got a sense of the functionality of something like that. It certainly breaks barriers that exist for many districts. I'm not convinced that we are one of them. But I certainly think that there are many districts in this state that essentially need things like this. And I would be in support of, and I guess, yes, there is ambiguity around this language for, for reason. So based on your last comment, I would be in support of this because of the, the word proposals.
Ms. Burns?
So this resolution would, will go to the lobbyists to lobby at the legislature. So it's not just a support or not support. And as I, as you recall, in, in the second piece, it says, where our school-based health centers, so this is specifically talking about school-based health centers, represents cost-effective investments of public resources by reducing inappropriate emergency room use, reducing Medicaid expenditures, preventing mental health issues and suicide attempts, and reducing hospitalizations. Totally, totally get in and support of that. But we don't have, let's say, for instance, as an example, have the space to set up a mental health clinic within the high school. We just don't have the space to do so. So does that mean, and, and this is the ambiguity, does that mean that we would not qualify for possible funding, which we still don't know where this is going to come from? You know what I mean? I think the state legislate, we have received grants, and I think there is money that have come from social emotional programming that we're seeing the state release. So to say that it's, we're in support of it, I mean, who, what school is it in? The state recognizes the mental health piece that districts across the Commonwealth are dealing with. And any kind of financial support in order to help students, staff, and our families within the communities, I, I think is, is most certainly recognized, in my, in my opinion. And I, I think, my concern is, though, is that as this develops, because there has to be a trail, we have to find a funding source, we have to find out what the criteria is to access that. And my aspect is, is, yes, I'm absolutely in support of the intent behind this resolution. But I want to also ensure, besides supporting other districts who most certainly could benefit this, from this, I think Wilmington could also benefit from it. And if we don't meet this criteria, which we do not know about yet, not saying not to fund clinics, I'm just saying, it just needs to be accessible to all districts and not just some districts, especially those the most need, which, you know, I just want to make sure. And that's what I'm, I'm not getting in this resolution, that all stakeholders are represented within this resolution. I, I guess is what I'm saying.
I see it as, as. Which, what you're saying, I, I totally, 100% hear you and understand that. But I think that that's something that happens almost like further down the line on something like this. And it's about, it's supporting proposals. So it's not supporting a specific plan that's going to mandate a clinic in, or, or, or whatever, whatever it happens to be, or how it's going to be funded. I think it's just about the proposals. And then, you know, the legislature or whoever is going to deal with, this proposal's good, this proposal's bad, based on, you know, all the, all of the factors that you're talking about. So I think just supporting, like, the creation of possible ways to fund mental health services in schools is a really good idea. How exactly that's going to happen? I don't know. But this is asking, this is sort of like supporting, like, just, let's, let's, let's all look at it. And it's almost like, I forgot the other resolution, where it's, you know, it's, it's establishing a committee to research, I think it was.
Alternative MCAS.
The alternative to MCAS. I see this sort of in the same light as that, where it's, it's not, it's, you're, I feel like what you're saying is you're almost getting into the, the nitty-gritty of stuff that's going to happen down the line. There hasn't, there's, there's no, there's not even a proposal. We're just saying, we're going to support a proposal for this, if that, if that makes sense. So I, I don't know if, because we're not, it's, it's just not getting, it's, it's, like I said, like, it's so general. And I think it's on purpose, general.
Well, but the thing is, though, too, and I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying this, I'm not pushing back, I'm doing this discussion, pros and cons.
Yep.
That it would be supporting proposals to establish dedicated funding for school-based physical health and mental health clinics and services. So the aspect, though, too, with, with that piece is, is where would we house this with this, and this, but these are the questions, because it's the sustainability. If the money runs out at the state level for the funding piece, then the school budget has to pick that up, if in fact it's the school district that is operating it, or if it's an entity that we're just, that the school building is just housing. Do you know what I mean?
In one of the, one of the proposals would have that in it. And it's, we're not even, we're not even looking at specific proposals. I think we're talking in.
Just to start the discussion, then?
That's what I think this is.
One thing impacts the other. So I, I mean, just trying to be mindful of that.
Do you, do you think, would you feel more confident, is the, is the word clinic the part that is sort of?
I think I would like to see more, I don't want to see detail, but I think I would like to see more structure to the thought as opposed to, as what the, what, there, I mean, they did add some basis of, you know, physical health and mental health clinics and services built within the, within, within school, school-based, within the schools. I think I would like to, and I think maybe that would, that can transpire at the discussion before the assembly. But I think I would like to see a, a little more clarification, the funding source. I would like to see, and again, that, that is what this discussion for the delegate assembly is for, which may clarify it. I just want to make sure it's captured in the language, so it's the understanding, not ifs, or, you know, it's a, it's how one looks at it and reads it, and their interpretation of it. And I think, I just, I, as I said, I think that in a perfect world, absolutely. And I don't think there's any, and let me just say, I don't think there's any harm in starting that discussion and proposal on what, letting it evolve. I just, I just, you know, it is beyond, it's very vague. And I just, I think I'd like a little structure into seeing where you're going to, whether it be the gambling profits, if that passes at the state level, you know, they're trying to tax that. I just, you know, I, I, we're going to lobby for public education and the well-being of our students. I just want to make sure it's a viable thing, and not taking away from anything that we, you know. I, I mean, it's, and no harm in supporting this resolution at all, but that's just.
I'm going to jump in here and say that one of the, one of the issues that often comes up with these resolutions is that you really don't know if you support it, because the devil's in the details. And so if it happens to go one way, then you might say, oh, that's great, that's what I wanted to support. And if it goes the other way, you'd say, oh, you know, in the end, actually, I don't think that's so great. But, you know, we have the, the, sort of the level of generality that we have, which usually is, is pretty vague at the point that we have it. So I'd like to ask if someone would offer a motion. Do we have a motion? Jake? All right. So move to approve Resolution 1, in a second. All right. Ms. Burns, second. Any further discussion? All in favor? And that is unanimous. I believe that closes our business for MASC resolutions. You're in charge again.
Great hands over, Bryce.
No. 7D, we need to take care of this tonight. I'm assuming, yeah. Okay. So we have 7D, the successor agreement negotiations for the Administrative Assistance and the Educational Assistance Committee. We are looking for school committee representatives. Paul, we are looking for two for each.
We typically have two.
Can you remind us of the, the typical meeting time?
It's usually after school, potential of one meeting every other week with, with the group, a couple of hours, and possibly a meeting in the off weeks, not every off week, but occasionally. And these start anywhere between, I don't know, 3:30, or after, depends on who's on the negotiating committee of these groups, and when they get out of their school. The latest school is 3 o'clock right now, so.
Thank you. I can take one of the spots. You can put me wherever, wherever you need. Anybody else? Thanks, Jesse.
Whichever one makes most sense.
Thanks.
I really wanted to. It just, that's when I see therapy. That's what I do.
No, sorry. I mean, we can, no one do what we can do. I think it's hard for people with their schedules. Some people can't, can't make it work. Anybody else?
After school, I was, it's tough right now.
Question? Are, are these going to be in-person negotiations?
We haven't got to that point, but we assume so.
Okay. And, and you said 3:30?
Yeah. I mean, again, we, once we get back to them and kind of figure out what time works for, you know, whoever's on the negotiating teams for the.
Do you, do you need two of us there, or is it really just?
It can be, it can be one. It can be one. It's fine.
We just do one each, then? We can back each other up if we need to. We'll just fill each other in, and then if I can't make one of the other ones, then I can flip back and forth?
Yeah.
I might be able to jump in on some of these, but I've hesitated to.
No, I understand. No, I understand. Okay. All right. Thanks. Subcommittee reports. Correspondence?
Done this evening.
Future school committee dates. We have November 4th is the virtual community cares event that Christine Murray shared with us earlier. You can find it in your, on the website, but also in your inbox. You do need to register ahead of time in order to receive the Zoom link. So please do that if you are interested.
It's also on the district calendar.
And it's on the district calendar. So lots, and it was emailed to you, so if you just search, you'll, it should pop up. And then you have to go to the flyer and register that way. November 17th is our regular session meeting, and then December 1st. Anything else? All right. And just a motion to adjourn. Mr. Finley? Thank you. Seconded by Mr. Samaha. All in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you all. Good night.